May 4th. This is Select Board Chair Marie Angelidis. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Richard Foster.
Here.
Mark Gold. Okay, Tom Lakusha.
I'm here.
Mark Strange.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Paul Pasterzic.
Here.
Debbie House.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Fire Chief Dearborn.
Here.
Beverly Hershorn.
Yeah.
Rebecca Townsend.
Here.
Thank you. This is an open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, this order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Therefore, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate. The order which you find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonably public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with operations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participations required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted in the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. According, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that they care not to share screen your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recordings. Meeting materials. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on thelongmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business into accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members and finding each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait till the chair yields to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote is taken in this meeting shall be conducted by roll call vote. All right, so we'll move to the beginning of the agenda. I just wanted to see if there are any announcements, Lynn?
Marie, I just wanted to add, I think we had another member join. I think Mark Gold was able to call in.
Oh, good. Oh, good, thank you.
Correct.
Welcome, Mark. Any announcements, Lynn?
I do not have any tonight.
Okay, I did want to announce that it seems that June 16th is our election date, and we're encouraging residents to request absentee ballots. And you can actually request an absentee ballot for the whole year at all elections. That would be the municipal as well as the primary in September as well as the election in November. Please tell your friends and family to request these absentee ballots sooner rather than later. The clerks really, town clerks going to receive a lot of these, and we need to give her enough time to be able to process the requests and then get the ballots out to people. So please let people know, place it on your Facebook page, encourage people to go to our website where they can find the application. Again, the process is you file an application requesting for an absentee ballot either for this election or you can say for all further elections this year. And then the ballot will be mailed to you and you can make your back. Okay, so any questions if you have on that, you can contact myself or Lynn or the town clerk. But again, go to the website. All right, why don't we begin with the update on COVID-19? Chief Dearborn, would you like to give us an update?
Sure, can you hear me all right, Marie?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. This is Chief John Dearborn. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board our community's response to the COVID-19. Not including our elderly housing and nursing facilities. And according to data by Mass Department of Public Health, as of today, we only have 11 active cases in Long Meadow. The nursing home continues to improve the situation daily. We get daily reports from DPH on that. The number of COVID-19 related EMS calls in the residential part of our community continues to slow. We hope to resume close to normal fire department staffing and operations on May 11th, which is good news. We are working on a community mask distribution program. We are doing this in cooperation with East Long Meadow Emergency Management. Obviously, one of the challenges is actually getting masks to distribute. In this case, since we were able to do a bulk purchase, we anticipated having 3,000 masks for initial distribution. We don't believe this will be enough to meet the community demand, but at least it's a start. We will likely focus on our most vulnerable population and coordinate with the senior center. We should have this, the mask, early next week, and we are still working on logistics for the distribution. But we think we'll be able to start some distribution next week of the week of May 11th, providing the masks are delivered as promised. That's been an ongoing issue with PPE. Vendors will tell you they have it, and then it gets cut off at the border or something else odd happens with it. The task force has been actively discussing our reopening plans. The struggle is the when and how this will happen. We do not anticipate much guidance before May 18th. In fact, Lieutenant Governor stated in her press conference today that they actually, May 18th is more the date they planned to release guidance. So I think our dates are all starting to push back further. When we get the guidance, we fully believe it will be a slow phased approach lasting for many, many months. Anticipation opening, we are engaged in several aspects of planning, modifying our customer service areas, developing training, modifying cleaning procedures, and procuring PPE for town employees while they're engaged in their work. Members of the task force participated in a female reconstitution training on Friday. This training provided many recommendations on how to plan for reopening. I was happy to learn that many of the things that they recommend, we were really already engaged in. We've also been actively involved in discussions about town elections, town meeting, and been working with the school district on graduation. All are difficult and obviously sensitive subjects. As we are moving our planning forward, we must consider that many of these protective measures could be in place for a very, very long time. Plans you make must be well thought out and sustainable. Again, I want to thank our residents for their efforts to keep our community safe. Our community spread has been very slight, and credit should be given to all our citizens for their efforts. I realize this is a very challenge, I realize this is very challenging. We are seeing some light now. It's not time to decrease our prevention measures. Stick with social distancing, wear your mask, and keep yourself safe. Please keep it up when we get through this situation sooner or later as a strong community. Thank you, and I'll answer any specific questions.
Okay, we're going to, I'm going to go through all the select board members to see if they have any questions or comments for the chief. Mark Gold.
None.
Richard Foster.
None.
Mark Strange.
No questions for the chief.
Tom Lakusha.
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much, chief. I'd like to continue with the COVID-19 update. We have joining us today Bev Hershorn from the Department of Health. Bev, which could you give us a little update on what is occurring in your department and with the Board of Health?
Okay, I just first wanted to say that Chief Dearborn quoted a figure for the number of active cases, meaning those people who are still in isolation. That does not include the Jewish nursing home. It just includes the people who are in the general community and people who live in the, in various housing types for the elderly. So we keep the figures separate because they're very different populations. The two main things that we've been working on relating are related to case investigations, contact tracing, and monitoring of cases and quarantines to see when these, the quarantines and the isolations can be discharged. So that's something that takes up just about every day of Carol Steiner's time is calling folks and getting updates to their status. And it also involves the very extensive record keeping and written notices that have to go out to residents, including notices in languages that are other than English. The other part of, another part of me and part of our work has been enforcing essential service orders and as of last week, researching other local regulations which might be more stringent than the governor or the Department of Public Health has, have ordered. Fortunately, the, a regulation that we were considering and we had actually worked out to great detail, the order, the governor's orders for masking or face covering outside of the home in, in places where it might be difficult to social distance. The governor came across with, with his own orders, which were very similar to what we had basically drafted. So I don't believe that the Board of Health is going to go forward with the general orders. There were a few provisions that we had in mind that were not included in the governor's orders, and we'll have to see whether the Board of Health really wants to pursue these additional provisions. The last thing is just giving general information to people. What is COVID? What are the signs? What are the symptoms? My, my mother was in contact with a third cousin four weeks ago. Is that person transmittable? And am I, can I allow my mother to be near my children? That kind of question, I mean, people seem to be concerned. They don't understand necessarily the information that is for one reason or other. And I don't know whether it's a language barrier or it's a technical subject matter. So they're calling me with all kinds of questions concerning transmission, including departments within the town who also have questions regarding employees. So that's been the main thrust of what I've been doing. Mark Gold had three general areas of questions, and I don't know whether you want me to address those now or wait for some general questions first.
Well, I can start with Mark Gold first, and he can see if he still has those questions. Mark, do you have any questions for Beverly?
Yeah, I still have those same questions, and if she can just go through them, it'd be good.
There seem to be some question as to isolation and quarantine and how we go about setting the number of days that people need to be in that status. This really isn't rocket science. We base our actions on the CDC guidelines, which are mirrored by the Mass Department of Public Health. And these guidelines have changed numerous times in the course of the last six weeks. So it really is, becomes a daily activity to see whether guidelines have changed and whether we're giving accurate information to people. So that is a challenge. It's a, it's a daily challenge to keep ourselves abreast of what's happening. So no, it, you may see people on our list, I don't know what access you have to, to our list, but you may see people on our list that barely look like they've been there for more than a week at a time, and then other people who seem to linger in either a contact status or a case status for, for a month or more. And that depends on the symptoms that they're showing, whether they've been, whether some family member, an additional family member has brought in a new case, which case we have to start the quarantine all over again for a second time. So there, we're doing it based on recommendations, not just off the top of our head. It was an additional question as to whether we anticipate any local regulations. The one local regulation that we were considering was sort of overridden by the governor's orders last week on facial covering. So I don't have, we may have a few minor additional provisions in mind, but we'd rather keep, unless it's a really outstanding and very remarkable public health reason. It would be better that local, in our opinion, it would be better if local communities stick with the state and federal guidelines because otherwise it creates a patchwork of, of regulations, and it's very difficult for both our residents and our business owners to understand what is applicable only in Long Meadow or in some other town. So in the sake of uniformity, it better be a pretty cogent public health reason for us to go forward with our own regulations at this time. And what do we plan in terms of testing? I think that was your third question. I, that is an excellent question. It, first of all, depends on whether testing reagent and testing materials will become available for us to do on a local basis. That isn't a reality at this point in time, so it's, it's more of a pipe dream that, rather than a reality. The other problem with testing is that, at least the testing that they were doing, required the use of PPE, personal protective equipment, and that would put a further drain on this, on the equipment that we already have than, the sort of relatively small stock of equipment that we currently have in hand. So we'd have to have the equipment, and we'd have to have the testing reagent and, and the machinery to do that or access to the machinery to do that. That may come in the future, and boards of health have been called upon in the past to do all sorts of things, and we would probably rely on members of our medical reserve corps to come forward and to meet the shortfall in, in, in medical staffing. But I really see a role for us in the future perhaps of doing antibody testing and definitely doing the immunization. I don't know if you recall, but when we had H1N1 about 10 years ago, the boards of health were just about the only entities that received the H1N1 vaccine at the beginning. Later on, doctors' offices were getting the vaccine, community health centers, pharmacies, et cetera. But in the initial first round, it was only the board, it was, it was only the boards of health that had access to the vac, that vaccine, and we might be the initial providers of the COVID vaccine when it finally is developed and is available to the general community. So who knows? We're ready for just about anything, and fortunately, we have a, a large core of medical volunteers that hopefully will come forward for us. Even, you know, even sparing three, four hours of time, they've been, our, our medical volunteers have been very gracious with their time.
Mark, do you have follow-up questions?
No, that's about it. The only question I would have, and I don't know if it's for Beverly or, or maybe for Chief Dearborn, is there any consideration of Long Meadow supplying masks to residents?
Is John still on?
Yeah, Mark, we, so we have 3,000 masks we anticipate coming next week. We are going to do a distribution on those. Our plan right now is to focus on our vulnerable population, working with COA on that. Then we can get follow-up supplies after that. The big challenge really is getting the masks at this point, and, or getting masks that are viable. That's been a big problem. There's a lot of junk on the market, quite frankly, and as you may have seen in the, in the meme of, they distributed masks that for first responders, it turned out to, they represented as N95s, and they were only 28%. That was actually based on testing we did here in Long Meadow and determined they weren't satisfactory before that information in the state, which started a massive recall. So that's part of the issue with buying PPE right now is that you may not get what you order. So we got 3,000 coming in, we're going to start there, and we're going to continue to try to make legitimate purchases and continue to roll it out, so.
Thank you.
Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments for Beverly or the chief?
Not this time, Marie.
Thank you. Mark Strange?
Nothing from.
Tom Lakusha?
Just keep up the good work, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Beverly, and be sure to thank Carol. I know this is like your Super Bowl, you, you're, you're working really hard these days, so we appreciate it. And thank you, chief, for all you've done. I know it's exhausting time, and as you said, we have a long way to go. And Lynn, do you have any update on COVID, anything else to add on that?
I, I don't, I think they covered it all, so, and I know Mark was having some trouble joining at first and likely missed the chief's announcement about the masks in a cooperative that we jumped into with East Long Meadow on the purchasing. So we should have more information on that available this week for how people can request those masks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now Lynn, are there any people, any residents on that want to make some comments?
I can go through the list here and find out. See, I have someone named Dave with his hand up. Looks like he maybe wants to speak.
Yes, it's Dave Marinelli.
Okay, could you state your, spell your name or state your name and your address?
Yes, I'm David Marinelli, nine Overbrook Lane.
Thank you.
And I would just like to, I'm here mainly to attend the meeting and learn, but I would like to take this opportunity to point out that two of the tree committee volunteers attended tree steward training this year. They learned about money available from the Commonwealth for tree planting, and Kathy Q Cab applied for a $10,000 grant, and it was awarded. We just learned last week that we have a matching grant coming for $10,000. So I want to thank Kathy Q Cab and Pat Carnahan for going to training and bringing money back to Long Meadow.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, and going down the list here, I have, let's see, Kathleen Rosati, Rosati?
No, I'm just listening in, thank you so much, it's Rosato. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see. I think, I think we heard that Steve Marantz was also listening in. If that's not correct, Steve, let me know. The same with Rebecca Townsend, she was participating during our town meeting discussion. And that looks to be it.
Tom Shay?
I'll pass for now, thank you.
Oh, okay.
All right, Tom.
Thank you. All right, Select Board comments, Mark Gold? Richard Foster?
None, except for some reason, the Zoom program keeps discontinuing tonight.
Oh, yeah, well, I've been having trouble with all of my internet today, too.
Yeah, phone, phone connection's fine, but the screen keeps dropping and reconnecting.
Okay, Mark Strange?
Yeah, just one, I guess it's a question probably for Lynn. So wondering how far along the discussions are on reopening the dump. We're handling the trash and recycling fine, but things are piling up pretty quickly as we're clearing out basements and spare rooms. We're kind of running out of storage space, so I suspect we're probably not the only people experiencing that. So just wondering if any discussions have been made or had around the dump.
Sure. Do you want me to address that now, Marie, or wait till Lala comments?
No, go ahead, why don't you address it now?
I also have a piece on this in my report this week. We did a opening of the leaf and yard waste area at the recycling center starting Saturday. We closed the leaf dump on West Road just for the farmer to be able to get the fields ready. So we moved everything back to the recycling center starting Saturday, and with the expectation that within the next two weeks, we'll be able to have the recycling center open for the rest of the household and bulky waste items. We wanted to see how that went with staffing and use of the center before we added the full component of the recycling yard. So it's coming, it likely won't be this coming weekend, but certainly the weekend after is what we're shooting for, which is middle of May at this point.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Tom Lakusha?
I would just like to say that of all the years I've lived in town, I've never seen so many people go down to our waterfront where the ponds are. And it's really, it's great to see people are keeping social distance, but they're out there enjoying our town, and, and they're in for a real treat because in the next week or so, there'll be a lot of great birds coming through the area. I saw some wood ducks this weekend, and all the warblers will be coming through, and it's a great pastime for people who live in town to do bird watching. And it's a great pastime for people who live in town to do bird watching down in the Fanny Stevens area. That's a great resource and for some people, I bet you they've never really spent any time down there. So it's, it's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Lynn, do you want to give us your town manager's report now?
Sure. Okay. So just like everyone to know that the updates will continue to be available regarding COVID-19 coronavirus there on the town's webpage at longmeadow.org/coronavirus. We had some staff furloughs last week related to COVID-19 with the ongoing pandemic and the closure of sound, some town services. Eighty-eight town positions have been furloughed. They include positions in parks and recreation, police department for the 25 crossing guards, stores, library, and the DPW had two seasonal labors and one part-time specialist in the treasure collectors office. These furloughs are in place until June 30th. However, they may be brought back sooner if the need arises. Addressing again, the leaf dump and the recycling center, beginning Saturday, May 2nd, the leaf dump on West Road closed and the yard waste portion of the recycling center opened. The changes were necessary to allow the farm fields to begin spring prep and planting. The recycling center is open for yard waste for the time being, just yard waste, no bulky waste or, or household items from Saturday, eight to five PM and Sundays and Wednesdays from 10 AM to 5 PM. You have to have a current dump sticker to use the facility and you can purchase those online. The opening of the rest of the recycling center, not including the swap shop, will to include bulky household, household items is in the works for later in May. This week, there is a community forum for the Bliss and Laurel Park Master Landscape Plan. This is a project being done by the Long Meadow Save Our Parks and the Conway School of Landscape Design. This public forum is Thursday night, May 7th at 7:00 PM and public participation is strongly encouraged. We have a Zoom account set up for it. You can watch it on LCTV or participate in it via Zoom, or you could just call in if you don't want to, to use Zoom. Information on the project is available at longmeadow.org/restoreblissandlaurel. And in, sorry, I just have to let someone else into the meeting. The shared services, shared health services arrangement was something that's been discussed on and off for quite a while now. It had picked up steam this past winter, but then got set aside to respond to COVID items. But yeah, in my March 2nd town manager report, I had stated that I intended to bring forward a shared services agreement for select board review in mid-April. But like I just said, that had been temporarily, temporarily set aside. However, the prior work that had been done allowed Long Meadow and East Long Meadow Public Health Partnership to apply for Department of Public Health Grant as a district and receive funding to help the town's response to COVID-19. The grant amount that Long Meadow received was $25,000. Another project that had started early this winter and then had been slightly stalled due to COVID was an E-code project. So this is a codification product, project of the town bylaws, both the general and zoning. This is with a company called General Code. The work will form, the work to formalize this project started in February, but it's now fully picking up steam to get going again. It includes a full legal review to identify inconsistencies in the bylaws and changes in state law. And the end product will convert the general and zoning bylaws to an easy-to-use and search online format. Examples of other communities that use it are Agawam, Belcher Town, Southwick and West Springfield. Those are just the local examples, but I can say from experience, it's probably the preeminent codification software in, in the country. The project's kicking off and I'm pulling an informal committee together to work through the proposals for General Code to make sure that the best, that the changes are in the best interest of the town. They, the changes will likely include renumbering of the bylaws for clarity and consistency. And the final proposal would need to be adopted at a town meeting. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any questions for Lynn? Richard?
No, Marie.
Mark Strange?
No.
Tom?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, you know, we had gotten information about the, the street lights and, and the Cobra heads and so forth. And then when we get to the decorative lights, is the town going to have to make any decision regarding what the decorative lights look like? Are they going to be, you know, if they're going to be just replaced exactly the same? Because, you know, I think that's something the board, if there's going to be a, like a standard light that's used in town, that should be something that comes through the board. And so I just was curious about that.
Lynn, can I answer that one?
Mark?
We're not changing the decorative fixtures at all, Tom. We're just changing the inside. So what you see is, what you see now is what you will see later. It's just the, if you will, the socket and the electronics that'll change.
Okay, great. And the other thing is, you know, the, this shared E-code project, you know, it looks good. I went to some of the other websites. And was this something that was funded out of last year's budget or is this something that was, because I imagine we have to pay these consultants to help us out with this? Just curious about that.
Yes, it's, it's a project that's being funded out of this current year, FY20. Funding was identified. It's, the startup cost is a little bit more, obviously, to get it all squared away, but then the ongoing maintenance of it is just like if we were paying a web service or any of our software just to host it. But it also includes, it'll include the ongoing updates to the E-code and the supplements that are required after, you know, town meeting when a bulk of bylaws may be changed. They'll update it for us and keep a nice, clean format.
Okay. It sounds good. And was this your idea or was this something lingering?
It, I think I probably sparked the idea because I had, I've used this quite extensively in my prior roles. But then talking with the town clerk, I discovered that this had been something that had been looked at by previous staff, but never had moved forward. So we just, I just kind of resurrected it and worked with Kathy to make sure this was something she wanted to undertake at the time. That's kind of how it started at this point.
All right. Well, thank you for moving that forward. I think it's something that the town will be interested, you know, when it comes time to vote. Hopefully they'll see the value of it. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Why don't we move on to the minutes? I'm looking for a motion to approve April 21st regular minute meeting.
I move we approve the April 21st, 2020 regular meeting minutes of the select board.
Richard Foster seconds.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, vote?
Marie?
Yes?
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And now I'm looking for a motion to approve the April 24th special meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the April 24th special meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board.
Second.
That was Richard Foster. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Marie?
Yes?
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the item, a vote on tax ceiling potential legislation and warrant article. Mark Gold, you're the chair of the Tax Ceiling Task Force and we asked for an opinion from the group. You want to give us a little, tell us a little background or report on what happened?
Sure. Thanks, Marie. We had a meeting of the Tax Ceiling Task Force last, last week, I think last Wednesday night. And essentially, we ended up in a situation, looking at the two options the select board was talking about. Option one, if you will, is go forward with a proposal for legislation that would eliminate the tax ceiling. Option two would be go forward with legislation that would raise the tax ceiling from the current $25 to some other number, which we did not establish. The group as a whole, as you can see from the document I sent, supported the go forward with a, eliminate the, or delete the tax ceiling and rather than put another ceiling in there that we just have to go back and change and change and change again potentially. So that, that's the proposal. And what you see here before you is actually a, a proposal for the wording of the, of the warrant article. And there's been some discussion, I've had it with Robin Frichette is the legislative assistant for Representative Ash, and this would obviously go, or not obviously, but this would go into the House where it would be filed in the, of the legislature. And so the, the question is, would the wording that goes before the town meeting be the exact wording that went before the legislature? We put that in here. It's the wording that was recommended by our town council originally, but we added that sentence at the bottom, if you will, that gives us the ability, if we need to, to adjust this wording because Robin indicated that there may be other components of Proposition Two and a Half lurking out there and other mass general laws that would also need to be changed. So we added in not only the, if you will, adding that paragraph F, which allows a community to override the ceiling, but says, or in other ways modifying Chapter 50, and it's a, that's a typo, it should say Chapter 59, Section 21C, to affect this local tax exemption from the 2.5% of a C, set market value tax ceiling limit. So if we, we need to change that, that typo, it should be Chapter 59. But I want to make sure everybody's aware that if this is passed at the current town meeting, if we put it on the warrant and it's passed, it would, and it went to the legislature and the legislature adopted this, it would have to come back to a future town meeting, be adopted by a two-thirds vote, and then go to a townwide referendum where it would need to be passed. So, you know, we're a long way away from, from approving this. There was also, and Marie and Paul started it, and I kind of stepped in on it, an explanation. I was going to say paragraph, but I think it's a couple of paragraphs that would go along with this, that would go on to the town warrant. So this is the proposal that it was adopted by the task, Tax Ceiling Task Force. There was a pretty broad sense that we should go forward now, not wait till the fall, that we believe this is going to take a long time, maybe as long as two years, get through the legislature. There's some concern that legislature is working on everything except things like this right now. And so it may not even be handled in the next legislative session. So we thought that we needed to move forward with getting this potentially to the legislature as soon as possible because if we think that we may be impacted in the fiscal year 2022 or 2023 budget, we'd need to have this in place as soon as possible. That, I guess I'll, I'll answer any specific questions people may have.
Well, Mark, I'd like to add to that. I want to clarify that what we're talking about is there's two parts to the law. One is that we can only raise taxes two and a half percent every year. And the other part of the law is there's a ceiling, which means you can only go up to 25 per thousand. We have, as a board, made an effort and a commitment not to go up to the two and a half every year. And our goal was to keep us away from the ceiling, though we're very, very close. And we were working with the finance committee to make that happen. Our concern now is with the fiscal crisis that appears to be following COVID-19, that we might have a serious problem with property values going forward. And this is where the ceiling hits. The ceiling hits with Western, small towns in Western Massachusetts. It does not hit in the Boston area. The ceiling, these towns are hitting the ceiling because our values are low. And so we wanted another tool in the toolbox in two to three years, because that's how long it's probably going to take, in case we are in a crisis and we've hit the ceiling and we're now talking about millions being cut from the budget, then the residents would decide whether to adopt this. So the only thing this vote says is that they agree that we look at this resolution or issue to be able to bring back later. But nothing, as Mark said, is being decided at this meeting. And it will be future select boards and residents in the future who will have two chances to vote yes or no in regards to this issue. I'm going to go through everyone to see if there are any questions for Lynn, Paul or Mark. Richard Foster?
None.
Mark Strange?
No.
Tom Lakusha?
Well, I would just make the comment that I wouldn't be able to vote for this because I really see this as a long-term solution to what could potentially be a short-term problem. I'm really more interested in seeing the town make adjustments so that property values continue to increase rather than taxes continue to increase over the long haul. If there was some sort of a time limit on this proposal that said this would be a five-year, we'd look for approval by the town every five years to exceed the 25 per thousand limit. I could understand that, but it seems like, you know, it's, it's written up that it's just a permanent fixture that, you know, there's no way to tell how high the tax could go. I know they only can go up two and a half percent, but still, you know, I would just, I see a time limitation on it. So.
Paul or Lynn, did you want to add anything else to this discussion?
I would just add that, you know, it's the bottom line every year is always up to the voters and how much they approve. Even though these limitations may be softened, town meeting does not have to vote to go to any, any certain height and they could actually reduce it at their own free will at any point in time. So, you know, town meeting does have the power to act if, if things are beginning to look unruly financially to them. So they, they still maintain that.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, my, my concern is that the denominator of our tax rate, which is the valuation, is out of our control. Only the numerator, which is how much we spend, is in our control. We've been controlling that quite well. In fact, the, the review of it shows that we've been controlling it as well as any community in the Commonwealth. But the, but the value of houses in the community is, is totally out of our, our control. And I understand, Tom, you're tired, let's do something to boost up our, our property values, but you know, short of things like Eric Lester's working on East-West Railline or something that makes Western Massachusetts properties worth what Eastern Massachusetts equivalent properties are, we're going to find ourselves in a situation without something like this where we're going to have to significantly cut back on the services that the people in Long Meadow want. And once we do that, it becomes, in my opinion, a probable spiral. That means as, as we cut back services, less people want to move into towns and the property values will decline. Therefore, we'll have to cut back more and property values will decline because less people want to move into town. Remember, it's not just, you know, the library or the parks and rec, this is going to be, impact schools and everybody else. If we have to freeze our, our budget in any given year because we've hit that $25 cap, you know, we're going to end up with a significant impact on, on the services that people have come to want in Long Meadow. And so that, that'd be my concern about not pursuing something like this.
I wanted to say I was concerned about having the removal of that whole part of the law rather than an adjustment. But we can't tie the hands of future town meetings and select boards because they could very well face cutting huge cuts. We're talking millions from the school budget as well as the town side. It, it could become quite drastic if our property values drop as much as they do. And how far they're going to cut is really, should be in the hands of those future boards and town meetings. So I also understand talking to some people at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, that it's not just that, but once you hit that ceiling and you have to make these drastic cuts, you can't do those matching grants. you can't do those matching grant funds like Dave just brought to us for $10,000. We would suddenly be cut out of a lot of grant programs and someone just said there could be a spiral. So I I regret regretfully said, this is a time for us to be looking at this because it's two years out. It easily is going to be two years out if we're lucky that the legislation will come back to us. And then we might find that we did great because everyone from New York decided to live in Long Meadow. And so our property value shot up. I mean, we don't know what the future holds. And hopefully, our we won't need to use this, but I'm just concerned to tie the hands of future boards. So that's why I'm going to support putting this on the warrant and allowing the town residents to decide on this. I'm going to go through everyone for more comments because we can't raise hands. Richard, do you have any other comments or questions?
None.
Mark Strange?
No.
Tom?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to put the it's the on the warrant, the potential legislation on a tax ceiling and a legislative solution?
Yeah, I'll move that we add this article to the current town meeting warrant as the local controlled tax ceiling option.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Mark Gold?
Yeah, the only thing I was just going to comment on is that the the group also formed two subgroups. One is on education, community education. The other is on legislative support and helping with the legislature. So just so people know that we didn't just kind of generate this and and drop everything. We're going to try to work on education and some other things.
Richard Foster?
No comments, Marie.
Mark Strange? Tom?
No.
Okay, my only comment before we take a vote is this is to put it on the warrant to allow the residents to decide if we're going to go for the legislative solution. It's not to adopt it. All right. Now I'm looking for a roll call vote, Debbie. Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Okay, it passes. Now we have the wording for the warrant article, but do we did we finally settle on the description? Or are you still working on that, Paul? Because I was I was fine with adopting all of your changes to that.
Marie, did you see my comments about that?
Oh, is it your comments? I thought that came from Paul.
No, that came from me, I think.
Okay, well, why don't we get that to Paul? And Paul, if you could work on the final wording?
Be fine. I I think Mark's version will probably be 100% there.
Okay.
Marie?
Yes?
Can I ask who seconded that motion?
That was Mark Strange?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to the discussion on town budget. Paul, you want to give us a little background or Lynn, who who wants to give us?
I'll actually start if you don't mind, Lynn.
You know, again, I I think during the last couple of meetings, I'd expressed my concern about budgetary numbers, especially mainly on the revenue side, being impacted by this pandemic. And thought it would be a good idea to go back and look at the revenues and potentially adjust the expense side of the budget, given the fact that we are hearing about some impacts, we're seeing some of the impacts. And we kind of want to be prepared to address those impacts. What I did is I had sent within the packet some what I just called guesstimated revenue impacts. And I do not use the word guesstimated lightly in this particular case. They are basically my feelings, kind of gut feelings on how some of these different categories of revenues are going to be impacted. But there is no historical data. There's no trend analysis. There is a little hearsay on some of them, but for the most part, it's it's just my guesstimating. I originally had come up with a figure of $591,000 roughly that needed to be be cut. I have since added to that and what I sent out earlier today, $260,000 in the form of daycare revenues and ambulance revenues. With the daycare revenues and the ambulance revenues, once we get to the expense side, you will see equaling cuts to the fire fire department's budget in the form of the two firefighters. And daycare, we just cannot sustain the budget that is there at this point in time. And if daycare begins to take off in the beginning of the fiscal FY21, and the revenues look like we're going to be, or the expense side looks like we're going to be short, we can adjust that at the fall town meeting. But quickly going through the initial $591,000 worth of cuts, I had estimated about $50,000 of potential new growth would be coming in. New growth generates from building permits that are taken out throughout the fiscal year. We are, you know, roughly by the time this pandemic started, we were almost 75%. Through the fiscal year, we were maybe 70%. I I would anticipate that certain things are going to be postponed by homeowners for basic reasons of not allowing other folks in their home or the fact that the their revenue, their their household income may have taken a hit themselves and are going to be postponing some of those projects that they would have looked at. The Massachusetts Taxpayers Association has identified a potential loss in state aid or the amount of revenue that the state is is coming in that normally gets distributed through what is known as unrestricted governmental aid. They've anticipated roughly a 14% decrease in that. And I have applied that 14% decrease to our FY20 amount. And basically, the decrease is about $250,000 that I would anticipate, again, the town losing revenue on. Motor vehicle excise has begun to slow down. I am I am I would be concerned that this fiscal year and going into the early part of next fiscal year, that motor vehicle excise sales will probably be slowed a little bit, again, for the same reason. People are are potentially seeing their income, household income being hit and maybe postponing those purchases. And the economy in general, if it does not pick up as quickly, again, would probably have some impact on motor vehicle excise sales. Licenses and permits go hand in hand with new growth. Of I anticipated about a seven and a half percent drop there to the tune of about $27,000. And on the meals tax, I relatively cut the meals tax in half from the FY2021 estimate of 145,000. So that loss of revenue was 72,500. And then lastly, on the information that I had sent you, I I just I put in the information regarding MGM, the anticipated revenue for FY2021 in MGM was $289,000. I I just don't know what's going to happen there. I will leave that up for debate at this point in time. But again, I've itemized the $591,000 loss of revenue. And again, you could even add, again, the daycare and the ambulance loss of revenue of $260,000. So I've minimally itemized $851,000 worth of revenue loss. I don't know, Marie, if you want, if we want to stop there and discuss these numbers, or if you want me to get into the the anticipated or recommended reductions on the expenditure side at this point in time.
No, I think you're right. Let's take it in two pieces. Lynn, did you want to talk, say anything about the cuts in revenue that he Paul was anticipating?
I mean, no, other than it it is a guess at this point. But I think we're we're seeing enough and we're monitoring what's going on with our colleagues everywhere else. And everyone's in the same boat. They're all having the exact same conversations right now. And again, it it's a guess, our best guess at this point.
Okay. Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments in regards to what Paul's put together there?
No, not really. I'd like to get into the to the cuts and see what's taking place there first, Marie.
Okay, Mark Gold?
None, I have no questions.
Mark Strange?
Just a quick question. Do we have any idea if federal aid is going to be coming down the to help out municipalities?
Mark, I would believe that there would be federal aid. Minimally, there's a 75% reimbursement amount that will probably filter through. If it's not coming directly from the federal government, it will filter through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Group there, MEMA. And there's bits and pieces that have come in. We did receive already, I think, about $27,000 that came in for the ambulance revenue and or expenditures. It was done through our ambulance billing contractor. And it was meant to supplement the loss of revenue anticipated on the ambulance. So there will be some money coming in. It's just a matter of timing. We were going to have to fill out the paperwork to get that MEMA or FEMA money. And I would hope that there would be also additional monies or minimize the cuts on the on the state side as they get federal money coming through. You know, that 14% loss in the unrestricted local aid hopefully would be supplemented. That's something would indirectly come through the federal government. But I don't have anything concrete in which I can offer. It's all a lot of, let's keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best.
All right, Tom?
No questions.
All right, my only concern is the casino MGM money. Did you build using that money in the budget?
The money was used as a revenue source, yes.
It was in our general expenses or was it tied to? Like, I think once we tied it to the truck, the fire truck, or was it?
We did not identify any specific area that within the budget, other than, you know, a generalization that will be used for police and fire departments for, you know, protective measures. But it's not really tied to anything, Marie.
Okay, I guess my concern is leaving that out there. I can see the casinos going and asking for a waiver on some of those agreements. And so I would feel more comfortable seeing some sort of cuts coming from that revenue source other also. I'm not sure how everyone else feels on that.
Well, I was going to comment too, Marie, because that's soft money. That's got a that's had a sunset. What is it, sunset in about six more years, Paul?
I think it sunsets in about 16 more years. I believe it was a 20, a 20 year agreement that we had.
Oh, okay. I thought I thought it was 10. Well, I'm mistaken, but it says.
Nineteen, a 19 year agreement, we're in year three. Okay.
Yeah, it still has a sunset to it. And, you know, we cautioned everybody when we went into it that to keep it away from operational dollars, because that money's not a guarantee. It's it could dry.
I just, I I also feel if we were relying on it and they're they're hurting, they're going to be going for legislative relief. And I'm Beacon Hill tends to listen to the casinos. That's the way I feel. Mark, do you have any other comments or questions?
Which more?
Mark Gold. Sorry.
Sorry, yeah. No, I I don't have any. In terms of the casino, I, you know, it's it's a fixed time, and I don't know if it's part of the year or much of the year, but, you know, it's not multi years for certain. So I I agree, we can do some adjustments. But in terms, in terms of the revenue, it a lot depends on what happens in the federal government and what kind of state state and local funding comes from Congress, I think. But everything else Paul's indicated is is just a maybe, like you said, a guesstimate. I mean, I could make an argument that said, you know, three, four, five months from now, cars are going to be so cheap, people are going to go out and buy cars. Who knows?
Mark Strange, do you feel we need to cut the revenues further?
Yeah, I know those those are good arguments. And so the we reduce $289,000 a share from from MGM and as I I wouldn't think that they would cut all the all the funding.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, just like to to be safe, we should probably anticipate that, you know, estimate that down quite a bit, although I would suspect that they'd be able to provide some some funds for us.
Tom?
Well, I think this is a good plan. Paul, thanks for putting all the time and effort into this. Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I'd like to see an extra at least 100,000 pulled out. If we do take out more than we expected, can we backfill in the fall? Paul?
We could certainly backfill, or, you know, we could make the cuts in the fall depending on if we have a better idea of where we're going to be.
Okay.
You know, the other thing that I will add on the revenue side is is you do have what I call two cushions. That being the $311,000 of excess levy capacity that is not built in into the budget. And you have an operational stabilization fund of $4.2 million that, again, it's 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 a perfect example of what the operational stabilization fund is there for. It's for the kind of the rainy day periods of time. And, you know, certainly, this is a rainy day period of time. And then, once we get into the expenditure side, you are also putting, at this point in time, which I would recommend, maybe we hold off, is you do have a warrant article for 200, an additional $250,000 to go into the operational stabilization fund. And, you know, maybe that could be used as the buffer. You know, potentially of of where MGM money goes. So there's just a couple ideas, just a couple options there on how to handle that.
And if you so would Moody's or our Standard and Poor, how would they feel if we did not put money into the stabilization fund?
Given these times, I would have to believe that they would probably say that's fine. As as you're aware, we went through our our rating discussion last week. We will have a an updated rating hopefully on Wednesday morning. And after that, I do not anticipate us going back out to the bond market for anything major for, you know, there's probably a few years that hopefully we would get back into some type of normalcy with revenues and, you know, the revenue cycles. So I'm anticipating that our double A plus Standard and Poor's rating is going to be maintained. And again, I do not think, given the times, that they would penalize us for not putting money in. And I'm not saying not put money in because I'm also anticipating that we're going to have a larger than usual free cash number that maybe the money that goes into the operational stabilization fund is something that could be addressed at the fall town meeting. And it it would not be a raise in appropriate as we have in the warrant, but it would come out of our free cash number.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm going to go through everyone one more time. Richard Foster?
No comments.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, I was just going to mention what Paul did. I, you know, we we didn't talk at all about free cash. And and, you know, I I understand all the issues of don't use free cash one time money for recurring expenses, but this is actually free cash, potentially using free cash, which is one time money to overcome one time or short term shortfalls. You know, we because we would anticipate that, you know, in 2022, the motor vehicle excise tax and all the revenue would start coming back up. So, you know, I I don't think we need to cut more because I think we've got opportunities like free cash or stabilization fund. And I I think rather than make drastic cuts now, not knowing what's going to happen, we could wait till the fall till we know exactly what at some point, the state's going to have to pass a budget.
Mark Strange?
Nothing further, Marie.
Tom?
Well, in terms of like excise tax for automobiles, I mean, don't people eventually have to pay those? And have we ever had a situation where people didn't pay their excise tax within a reasonable amount of time?
Yes, people are required to pay that. If if they do not pay it, they have what's known as they get a mark on their license. And the next time they could. And the next time their mark, their license comes up for renewal, they would be denied. At which time, they try to make up all the, all the penalties and interest and plus the taxes at that point in time. So it usually catches up to them if they, say, you know, purposely or, or not purposely do not pay their, their excise taxes. It catches up to them eventually.
Yeah, but Paul's point of excise tax reduction, Tom, isn't that people aren't paying. It's that people aren't buying new cars, and therefore they're paying much lower excise taxes than if they have a new car, which comes in at a higher tax rate. Long Meadow traditionally has a good number of people every year buying new cars. And so we have, you know, these new higher excise tax bills come in as opposed to whatever the minimum is forty bucks or something like that, or forty-five bucks. So I think that's the issue, Tom. It's not people not paying.
Okay, thank you.
Is that true, Paul?
Yes.
Just to add briefly to that, and again, it's a yes at this point, but after the last recession, a lot of the car companies did significant deals to get people into those new cars, and most communities saw a major increase in motor vehicle excise because they hadn't anticipated the flood of people going out and buying new vehicles. So there, there could be a positive out of it, but it won't be enough to save the entire budget.
All right, Lynn, thank you for your comment.
And I like the idea of maybe postponing, putting money in the stabilization fund. I'm not comfortable with increasing the levy, just that we had that, the most recent conversation we just had about coming close to the tax ceiling, trying to stay back from it. So I'm glad we have another cushion other than increasing the tax levy to deal with. All right. So now that we've finished discussion on cutting the revenues, you wanna talk to us about what you'd be doing with the operational budget?
Okay. Again, on the revenue side, those total cuts were eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. On the expenditure side, again, I've itemized, Lynn and I had discussed areas that we'd, we'd look at and then some recommendations. I've itemized in what I had sent to you within the packet of seven-hundred and almost forty-eight thousand dollars worth of either cuts and/or postponements on certain items. If you add the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, that comes up to about nine-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars worth of cuts that are being proposed and are itemized in, in the information I sent this afternoon. But I just want also to make you aware that I had to add forty-five thousand dollars into the line item for residential and municipal building trash pickup. So the net amount is about an eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollar reduction from the budget that was originally voted on back in, in March, which is relatively close, actually. It's about eleven thousand dollars more in, in either cuts or postponements. So, and that forty-five thousand dollars is, is a result of the recent negotiations. And again, looking at the numbers, I saw that we were short, and I just, I didn't wanna wait. I'm taking the opportunity now to adjust that, that budget. So we do make sure that we have the money available when it comes to the setting the tax rate and everything like that. Don't have to worry about it in the fall. But on the itemization that I had sent you over the weekend within the packet, we're looking at a little over a ten-thousand-dollar cut in finance salaries. And basically, I have two vacancies at this point in time that I am confident that, that money could be made up when those vacancies and attrition take place. However, in order to present this, the money would be the line item that would be taken out of in the budget, as I, as was shown in this afternoon's information was sent. I would take it out of my line item with the anticipation that it would be fulfilled when the savings are materialized in those two vacancies. Likewise, with the DPW salaries, it's the same type of scenario. They have a couple vacancies currently. They have a number of employees that or they have a far more mobile employee group that they have vacancies fairly consistent throughout the year that we're looking at about forty, forty thousand dollars. And we would take it out of the line item for ground seasonal salaries that we'd ask for forty thousand dollars to be reduced from that budget. We are looking at a Westcom assessment. The original budget was a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Since that time, we're aware that East Long Meadow and Munson are coming into play, and we'll be live with Westcom by July first. Whatever we had estimated that our assessment would be a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, we would assume that the assessment will be diluted minimally with those two other communities coming into place and potentially could even be eliminated if the state grant comes through. But I've only offered a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction just because of the dilution of those other two communities coming on board. We had added two new positions in the DPW. And we had did some, we did some cuts to those back in, in March. There was a DPW grounds laborer that we had brought on to take care of the additional work that was gonna take place around the New Council on Aging Building and Wolf Swamp Fields. We've completely eliminated that position from the FY twenty-one budget. And likewise, with a DPW town building custodian, we have eliminated that from the FY twenty-one budget. You know, if the time came that we needed things or, or we found the additional money in the fall with potentially free cash, or as, as these things come to fruition, potentially, we could add those back. We've asked, Lynn and I have been meeting with the school superintendent and their finance assistant superintendent. We've gave them a target of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the schools that figuring that was a fair share of these, of these budgetary cuts. Roughly, when we look at what I define as a discretionary budget, and by that I mean the total budget less employee benefits and bond payments, they really make up about seventy to seventy-five percent of the budget. And we thought that that was a very reasonable amount to ask them to come up with those types of cuts to their budget. They will bring that number forward to the school committee. The school committee will be working on that number between now and town meeting minimally. I cannot say if the school committee is in agreement or in, in any type of, I just don't know their feelings is how they're gonna feel about that. And if that number, if they're gonna be able to meet that number or not, or maybe they could even come up with more. I just don't have that information. There was a special article for wage adjustments. I'm asking that eleven thousand eight, eight hundred be reduced from that. Basically, we have a library budget that is meeting the, the funding criteria to get the state grants. We potentially would have to postpone those, the, the new services that were being added to the library potentially dealt with Saturday openings during the summertime, I believe. Those may have to be on hold in order, order to make up that. And they would be asked to fund any type of wage increase for FY twenty-one within their current allotment. The same would hold true that we saw that the parks and rec, director's salary line item already had a FY twenty-one wage adjustment built into it. So we would not be transferring money out of that wage adjustment account, and that amount was an additional eighteen hundred dollars. So that article number fourteen would be reduced by thirteen thousand six-hundred-and-eleven dollars. With regard to capital, we would ask that a couple actually be postponed. A couple of the projects, we actually postponed. The fire department kitchen updates and the fire truck reserve, those two amounts, amount to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. I think those could more easily be addressed in the fall, once we have a better idea of where we stand. And if need be, could take the money out of free cash or even postpone them into the FY twenty-two capital plan if necessary. The warrant article for the stabilization fund is article fifteen. I've asked, at this point in time minimally, that we at least reduce that to two-hundred thousand dollars in order to make up some of these deficiencies. So that was the, that's, you know, kind of the recommendation at this point in time. The other two hundred could easily, if we just eliminate that warrant article completely, the other two hundred thousand dollars could easily be set aside for any, any type of things that come up if we do lose the MGM money or any type of other concerns that need to be addressed in the fall. I just threw out one other line item, and that was the OPEB contribution. I just throw that out. We did not ask for a, a reduction in that line item, but our contribution was a half a million dollars in that line item. And again, it has remained untouched. I also want to identify again, and this is more in the information that I sent to you this afternoon, we cut the fire department budget by a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And again, that was offset by a loss of revenue. Those are the two new firefighters that were proposed to go to become effective on July first, and their employee benefits that were associated with those two new firefighters. So again, that was kind of a wash, but that was a cut to the bottom line on the expenditure side, as was a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in daycare salaries. Their revenue for FY twenty is probably going to be somewhat, somewhere just over two-hundred thousand dollars. It is difficult for me to support a budget request of three-hundred-and-some odd thousand dollars when the revenue is just not going to be there from prior years. If we maintain the higher three-hundred thousand daycare salary line item, it would mean additional cuts are somewhere else in the budget. I think if the daycare is reopened July first, they get back on their feet and things are operating fairly smoothly, we could address any type of additional supplemental appropriation to the daycare salaries in the fall and also have an easier time proving to the Department of Revenue that we would meet those revenue expectations associated with their opening. Like I said, in total, that was nine-hundred, almost nine-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. But again, I had to add forty-five thousand dollars to the line item for curbside pickup and town building pickup of trash and recyclables. So that net amount was about eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars that that bottom line or that the cuts with, not only within the budget, but also certain articles were reduced that were in the warrant originally.
Hey, thank you, Paul. Lynn, did you wanna add anything to report?
No, Paul covered it all.
Okay. Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments on the cuts?
Yeah, the only, the only comments I have, Paul, it would seem to me there's a lot of, lot more stuff in the capital program that could be deferred for one year. There's a lot of vehicles in there. There's a lot of heaters in there. There's some really large ticket items that I think with a little bit of engineering ourselves, we could push them over for one more year. I talked to Marie earlier about that. I mean, you could even, we just got our new engineer on board now. So I would imagine some of these programs that he's gonna involve with aren't gonna get up full, fully up to speed. I mean, I'd need to cut my tongue out to say it, but you could likely even cut some of the sidewalk money and some of the asphalt money for one year, just a one-year period of time, because I'm not sure they're gonna be able to get up and get everything going as quickly as we would hope they can.
Did you record that, Marie?
Yeah. Ri- Richard, I, I, I do not disagree with you. You know, there's, there's, there's probably many more of the different projects within the capital budget that can be either postponed or eliminated, depending on how far you wanna go. I guess at this point in time, I, I would say that if there are a few, that we only postpone them at this point in time and reevaluate where we are with those in the fall that, you know, if we make, if we make the adjustments now, we might be in a better position to identify if we do have any excess funds and still meet the three-hundred thousand excess capacity in the fall, and we could add those back in at that point in time.
That, that's true, Paul.
Yep.
That, that's all I have, Marie.
Okay. Mark Gold?
Yeah, I had two things. One, I agree with Rich. Richard, I, I think that we ought to look at the capital, because so many times we appropriate money for capital projects, and we don't end up spending it for six or eight or nine months. And if we don't appropriate it, maybe we're better off. The only comment I was gonna make, and I know this is more show than financial benefit, is I was wondering if, what the sense would be of the board to take a, a holiday from select board remuneration for the first quarter of the year. It's only worth twenty-five hundred dollars to the budget, but I think it, it, it might show the real seriousness of this, of this issue and the need to cut the, to cut the, cut the budget. I'm not suggesting we change the authorization, if you will, but rather change the budget so that we continue to authorize the same amount going on. But that, that's my only, my only suggestion. Again, I think it's more administrative, but showing, you know, we're serious, we need to do something.
Okay. Mark Strange, any comments or questions for Paul or Lynn?
Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, going into it, I was assuming that we would see more capital projects be cut. It was, it was, it was nice to see that many of them are still included in the budget. I thought Paul did an awesome job getting us through kind of bigger picture. I'd rather see, if, if the situation arises, I'd rather see capital budgets cut instead of people getting cut, positions getting cut, or salaries getting reduced, anything of that nature. I think this is a temporary situation that could, could have lingering effects in the next couple of years. But much rather push off a capital project than affect people's salaries.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, well, a couple of things. One is, I noticed that there was some adjustment in terms of the DIF. And I didn't understand why that would have changed at all, Paul.
I, Tom, you're gonna have to show me where that change is, because I don't think there's a special article on the DIF, and it should not have changed. I'm just looking for the article, Article twenty-one, a hundred-and-eighty thousand?
Well, yeah, but it was on your budget sheets. You know, you had the two budget sheets you sent us.
Yeah, this afternoon. Okay, let me just look at it.
One of those two budget sheets.
Yeah, no, I know what you're talking about. I don't have comments on here. I think those just might have been my notes. I don't think there were any cuts to those budgets.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think when you look at those last two columns with the budgets, one's gonna say the select board voted column. And then the other column is select board adjustment, that I think when you look at those two columns, they're identical.
Okay.
So there, there are no changes in the debt service section.
Okay. All right. The other thing was, it was surprising to me to think that for the, when we look at the dispatching that takes place, you know, at the Westcom, that we get twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and we pay a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Am I reading that correct?
You're reading it correctly, but the, you know, the fact of the matter is about seventy-five percent of that budget comes directly from the state.
Yeah.
For Westcom, the other twenty-five percent are the assessments to the communities. The communities, the assessments are broken down in a formula that takes into population crime statistics and things to that nature. You know, Chigaby is three times as large as, as the town of Long Meadow. And like I said, it'll get further diluted with the inclusion of East Long Meadow and Munson. So I, I was fairly confident that, that twenty-five thousand dollars could probably be cut with, with without having to look back at it later on.
Yeah. Okay. No, that looks great. I mean, we might get some other communities to join board, join us with this too. And, but thank you. Okay.
Okay, Paul, Lynn, are you looking for a vote to accept the changes in the budget that were proposed?
Well, I think we might wanna just wait until we get to the warrant articles. As we review the warrant articles, there is a budget article that potentially, if these are accepted as presented, we would make the adjustments in that article at that point in time. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if you have any further discussion on that, or, you know, but I think it might be easier to do it that way, Marie.
Okay. I'd like to move down, though. Warrant's gonna take us a long time. So I'd like to pick up the, the next two items, because I know Rebecca is waiting to speak in regards to the annual town meeting. So I'd like to pick up that, and then I'll go back up to town and committees, and then we'll go to the warrant article. We don't have anyone else waiting other than Rebecca, I think, in regards to this meeting. So I wanted to invite Rebecca to speak to us now about the annual town meeting and town election process discussion.
Thanks, Marie, and the rest of the select board. I appreciate it. As you all know, the governor's ban on public gatherings does not include town meetings. And yet, it's not really prudent at all to be gathering. And so, like many other moderators across the Commonwealth, I'm, I'm recommending that we not- And so, like many other moderators across the Commonwealth, I'm, I'm recommending that we not hold a town meeting during the stay-at-home advisory. Certainly the, the ban on public gatherings. And so I wanted to start off with that as the framework. I mean, currently, this, the town meeting is scheduled for June 23rd. And I know I would advise meeting a little bit earlier and, you know, we've discussed that in the logistics meeting. But I wanted to preface a little bit more of my comments. I've requested guidance from the governor's office, who referred me to DLS, the Department of Local Services. I've been referred to the Attorney General's Office. I asked the Secretary of State's Office, Mass. Department of Public Health for guidance on town meetings after the ban on public gatherings. So after the, the stay-at-home advisory ends, how, how should we conduct a safe town meeting? There is no guidance at the state level currently. I'm told that there will be some guidance as well. The Berkshire County Boards of Health Association put out some guidance. However, they, in their guidance, they assume that town meetings are part of the ban. And so it's, it's a little disconcerting that there's this disjuncture at the state level. But I am very heartened that our Board of Health, our Health Director and our Emergency Management Director have been on top of things. There's a public health and safety plan that's developed for every town meeting for all of the large events. And there will be one for this event and that logistics plan is, is working out. I've been work, as you know, working on logistics for this. Whenever we do have a town meeting, if it is indeed June 23rd. These logistics would include a number of different precautions that we can take to make sure that we minimize any harm to our community. My number one priority is safety and legitimacy for this meeting. I should also note that the governor, governor's emergency legislation has permitted representative town meeting towns to meet remotely. I'm part of the, but not open town meetings. I'm part of the Massachusetts Moderators Association Remote Participation Task Force. And we have examined the issue of remote participation for quite some time now and have a draft report out. Remote participation is not something that we can do, unfortunately. There's no legal framework for that, for open town meetings. And so what are the things that we can do? When we do have a town meeting? Number one is have it outdoors. And this is something on which the Health Director and the Emergency Management Director and I are firmly of one mind on. Outdoors is the safest option. In talking with Lynn and some of the department heads. It was determined that the parking lot in front of the high school is probably the best place for this. Getting chairs set up and having people meet in a very spread out fashion. We haven't determined the spacing distance yet. At least six feet, maybe 10, we're, we're going to be determining that. It's not specified yet. Other things that we can do including, include wearing masks. So I'm going to require that everyone who participates in town meeting, anyone who enters will wear a face covering of some sort to cover the mouth and nose. And we're working on having masks available for anybody who doesn't have one. And so there's a variety of different things that we can do to make the meeting safe or safer as, as much as possible. And if there's anything specific about the logistics that you'd like information on, I'm happy to answer those questions. I've already referred to you to a document regarding motions that people could make, that the select board could make or any other citizens could make to shorten the warrant as well. But other than that opening set of comments, I am looking forward to the discussion.
Okay, Lynn, did you want to add anything? To Rebecca's comments?
No, I don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay, Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments for Rebecca?
None at this point.
Mark Gold?
No.
Mark Strange?
Hey, Rebecca. Do we, do we have the, the speaker microphone capabilities to project to such a kind of a big, open space? I'm sure we do.
Lynn took the lead on this and really was one of the first in, in the Commonwealth to suggest having an event management firm brought in that specializes in outdoor events. And so a company like that, that has expertise and the staff to be able to handle the sound production of such an event. That will come in very, very handy. We also have an inflatable screen for projections. And we're, we're trying to, one more thing to add is I'd like to do a survey of residents and voters to see how many people are expecting to come to town meeting. It's not required at all, but having a sense of, you know, is it 200 or is it 600? That makes a big difference in our planning. And so if we can have some sort of ballpark figure. We'd be able to answer those questions and the, the folks who do the sound tech that you're asking about would be able to gear the, the plan to the, to the likely amount of people.
Okay, Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, the only question would be, you know, what if it rains on a Sunday afternoon? Would we be able to do it in a way that we'd have a rain date?
So that the town meeting is for Tuesday night. Preferably 6 o'clock.
Okay.
And then we could have the rain date the next day.
Great, thank you.
Mark Gold, you have a question?
Yeah, how, how do we check people in? Is it gonna, you know, that, I mean, that's the, to me, that's the social distancing. And, and we need to verify that only town residents are there voting.
So that's something that Kathy Ingram has been part of this logistics group that we, has been meeting for the last couple of months to talk about these kinds of issues. Having dividers so that any worker is separated from the other workers, masks and everybody wearing PPE, the personal protective equipment. Having spacing set up so that when people line up to, to come in, there's appropriate spacing and all of that. All of those logistics are going to be worked out. It just takes time to develop those.
And Mark, just to add to that, one of the ideas was snow fencing or some sort of temporary fencing around the parking area so that we did have specific entry and exit points. Make it easier to do those counting.
I have a question. Rebecca, if everyone's sitting in the parking lot, where are we parking?
And that's something that we're still working out. I should note that there were two main locations that we were examining. One is the parking lot and one is the football field. There was concern about the potential damage to the field. It's it's, it's hard to tell at this point. However, we've, you know, on this logistics team is Gary Fontaine, the police chief, the fire chief. DPW chief, and so we're, we're working on those specifics. In large measure, we need to have a rough idea of how many people will be coming. If we have 300 to 600 people who will be coming, we need to plan for that and adjust the location as necessary. However, the, the best location that the group has been able to identify thus far is the parking lot.
Tonight, do you need us to just say it's going to be at the high school for the warrant? Or do you need an exact location on the warrant?
The high school is the address. And so we can do public relations and campaigns, public information campaigns to advertise the specific location. It will probably be the parking lot unless something drastic does change.
Marie, Rebecca, what, what if we had to have it at Russell Field, park in the parking lot and walk across the street to Russell Field? Is that considered the high school?
I would think no, because it's a separate address.
Is that under consideration? Have people sit in Russell Field with, you know, lawn chairs or whatever it is and park in the parking lot?
We can bring it to the logistics team and, and discuss that. If we do have to move the location, that's and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, and you know, it's, it's not something that has to, that specific location doesn't have to be worked out, but could Russell Field be included? We didn't give as much consideration to Russell Field. We were primarily looking at the football fields. And the, the football field, because it has the PA system already, and the parking lot.
Right. We did, we had like a very brief conversation, I think, about Russell Field. And one of the reasons we ruled it out fairly quickly was electricity proximity to bathrooms. Some of the concerns about being on a lawn area where it's not that easy to walk if you have mobility issues or have a wheelchair. And so that's why we pretty much centered on the high school and a flat paved surface close to electricity and proximity to bathrooms.
Richard, do you have any other questions or comments?
No, I don't, Marie, you know, except to, you know, keep, keep up with the active news, you know, they're starting to come out with very different information in the last couple of days than we had last week. You know, they're doing forecasting now in June that we may be in a whole different state of affairs than we are today.
Rebecca, you want to respond to that? What would happen?
No, I, I've, I've been paying attention to it and it's very concerning and, you know, the I, as I said before, if there is a stay-at-home advisory in June. I'm not going to allow the meeting to go on. I would delay it. And so I want to reassure the town that if the governor's advisory is in effect. I'm going to delay the town meeting. So it's not something that I, I take lightly at all.
And you're allowed?
That addresses your concern, Richard.
Do you want to describe the process for the residents and how you delay that?
Sure. And this is part of the, the materials that I had sent to you regarding the the delay procedures. It's a new chapter, 39, Section 10A. And the basics involve the moderator being in consultation with town officials. Determining the level of risk. Determining other variables like the cost effectiveness of measures available to mitigate that risk. And then I would, following that consultation with, with the select board. The Emergency Management Director, Board of Health Director. And Board of Health, I would issue, I would determine whether to declare a recess in continuance of town meeting. And if so, I would make that declaration and then file it with the state, would make a lot of public information available to voters so that they would know. And, you know, if we, if we learn of the governor's stay-at-home advisory being continued sooner than say May, June 22nd or beforehand. We would issue that, I would issue that declaration beforehand. As much advanced notice as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mark Gold?
Yeah, I mean, you know, on July 1st, we turn into a pumpkin if we don't have a budget. So, you know, I, I think we need to understand this is as early as we do because June 23rd only gives us a week. And, you know, if we need to, I know there's provisions now to pass a 112 budget or something, but but, you know. I, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in July and August when people try to start leaving town or they realize that nothing's going on. I mean, at some point, we've got to have a town meeting. You know, we can't, we can't continue 112 budgets, you know, forever. So not to mention the fact that 112 budget is just a 12th of what we had, not of what we need. So all I'm saying is, at some point, we need to take a good, hard look of, yeah, we can only get 70 people there, but we got to do what we got to do because we, you know, I mean, you know, yeah, there are a handful of what I'll call questionable or controversial items on our, our warrant, but for the most part, the warrant tend to go pretty well.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make one. Yeah, I would just say that from the time this concept of having an outdoor meeting was first presented. There's been a lot of fine tuning and I'd like to thank you for all the people who are involved. I know not just people discussing tonight, but there's other people on your committee. Is there any chance that you could mention the names of the folks who've been helping you, Rebecca?
Oh, sure. So Lynn Simmons, obviously, Paul Pasturzik. We have the DPW Director Mario Maza. John Dearborn, who's acting both as fire chief and as emergency management director. Gary Fontaine, police chief. Beverly Hershorn, Health Director. Kathy Ingram, Town Clerk. Kevin Zabawa from the IT office in the School Department. Nick Jorgantus with Facilities. Paul Dunkerly in the School Department. Oh, let's see. This is the problem with naming people off the top of your head because when you forget, it seems awful.
Well, Lynn is the only one you haven't mentioned.
No, I mentioned her first.
Tracy, Tracy.
LCTV, so sorry, Tracy, you're the one who's filming us right now. Oof.
Paul Pasturzik.
Who else am I missing?
Well, the last go around, you added some more people and that was really helpful.
Yes.
George Shay.
George Shay and Marie, George Shay of the Council on Aging. Marie Angelides has been part of this. Who else? Who else? That may be it. I've, I've invited.
Town, town council also.
Oh, yes, Jesse Beltertim, Town Council. Thanks, John.
Okay, all right. Thank you. There's a lot of folks.
And Marie, if I could just add, I just, I think it's, it needs, it should be noted that a lot of this is all due to Rebecca pulling everyone together so early and having this conversation. I think it's, it's worthwhile and we'll see that the planning effort that goes into this, I think, is going to be worthwhile, just like everything we've done so far. The planning leading up to it has proven to be worth every, every cent of time we spend there. And so that's due to Rebecca's thoughtfulness and bringing us all together.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say that I think we missed one person. That's Kevin Zabawa.
Thank you, though.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. We appreciate it. We'll probably be bringing you back again as, as things solidify.
Sure, thank you.
Marie, I have a question.
Okay, yes, Richard?
Well, you know, I was looking at the document she's given us and, and she had a lot of suggestions. When are we going to be making our mind up on some of these items?
Well, I think the select board's decision is, is going to be at the high school. We're going to discuss that now. And details on everything else, I think your, your group is still working on it. I understood that the 23rd is what we voted on. She's suggesting the 24th for a rain date.
Well, no, I'm talking about when she got down to the warrants and motion, and the motions, she said the board may consider several actions. And she specifically gave several actions that we could take. When is that going to be made?
Okay, I have to pull up my sheet on that. Do you want to review those, Rebecca, that he's talking about?
Let me hit my document up. So I understand you're going to be looking at the warrant, I think, in the, soon in, in the meeting. And at that point, when you reopen the warrant, you'll add in the, the one you just, the article you just voted on with regard to the, this tax ceiling. And you may consider the change in the budget. There are a number of other items that you're considering, like pulling some articles from the, from the warrant entirely. For those that you don't pull, the ones that you leave in. You could do a number of different things. For example, motion to, move to approve a certain number of articles as part of a consent calendar. We've done this before where you group, say, five or six or 10 articles, however many articles you, you wish to consider as part of one motion. Move to consider them as part of a consent calendar and then we'll offer the move to consider them as part of a consent calendar and then we'll offer the voters a chance to remove an article from the consent calendar and handle it separately. If all of the articles, the articles that remain as part of that consent calendar would get voted on as one, and so we wouldn't be voting on each individual one, we'd have one motion on all of those articles. So the consent calendar is something I recommend. And letting people know what is in that consent calendar in the warrant is important to do. But it's not, it's not a make or break thing. The other are, the other articles, if there's any zoning article that you wish to defer till fall, let's say, I would suggest that make, that, that the, the options that you can consider for that would be making a move to refer to the planning board or some other committee for further study. Because a motion to take no action, which is what we've done before, could be construed as a negative act on the, the article and thus cause some problems for it. Other motions include indefinite postponement, which requires a simple majority. It's simpler than a laying on the table, which requires a two-thirds majority. But you'd have to promise that these articles do come back. And if there's any motion sheet that can be included as part of any handout that's given at the meeting or included in the warrant, that's helpful again, but not required. Does that answer your question, Richard?
Yeah, basically, I, and I was reviewing the warrant too. Because we haven't really made decisions on that. That's what, that was my concern, that you had a lot of information that you were trying to put out in your document, which we hadn't talked about in an open format. And yet, when we go back to the warrant, we've got the color coded on. So I wanted to make those, make sure those two things laced together appropriately.
It, it's good to discuss this before you get to that so that you know what you want to do with those, those articles. But I, you know, the, the only thing that I would request, some sort of a sense of the, the group is on the memo for, the memorandum of understanding of the procedures for town meeting, the postponement. I proposed it as an agreement between the town manager, the moderator, and the select board. And it's a general statement of what will happen for any delay or postponement. And so before you get to the, the warrant discussion, I just didn't want to leave that, that hanging.
Does anyone have any difficulties or would like to change the memorandum of understanding she's recommending? Richard Foster?
No.
Mark Gold? Mark Strange?
No.
Tom Lakusha?
No.
Oh, I think we all like your, your procedure that you've laid out if we need to postpone again. And I think it's important for residents to understand, you, you put safety first and we're moving along. And if things don't look good, you will sit down, as you've shown in this procedure, on moving forward or not moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay as we talk about the warrant.
But I'll, I'll remove the camera and the, I'll mute myself.
Okay, unmute if you have something to say. You're welcome to join us. All right, so we want to go back to the warrant and I got a little confused with your color coding. But I thought we would go through, you know, line by, article by article. And we can keep in mind the idea of this consent agenda and what you recommend re-remove or postpone. Paul, did you want to lead this or Lynn?
I'll take the lead. No problem with Lynn. You outside with that? Okay, you know, articles one, two, and three are remaining as is.
Paul, before we start that, we started the greeting and so the changes that's going to be that is it's going to me, say, we're just not in the gymnasium, but it's going to say Long Meadow High School on the twenty-third of June. And are we going to put the rain date in under the greetings? Or are we going to have a sheet covering the warrant where we describe all of these new rules?
I think we, I mean, we could put the rain date in there. I don't think that's, that's an issue.
Okay, because I know we discussed putting a separate sheet with a color to talk about, we have to have masks. You need to socially distance all of these specific rules that have not been solidified. The group's still working on them. And, but you're talking about, since this goes to everyone in town, it doesn't need to be in the warrant, but that could be a cover for it. Is that correct?
Right, right. And, and we could certainly, we'll just repeat the rain date in that, in that information also.
Okay. All right, so go ahead on article one.
Okay, the only other thing is Rebecca had recommended that we start at six PM as opposed to seven. I didn't know.
Does anyone have problems with those changes in the greetings? No? Richard Foster, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, everyone else can raise their hand. All right, go ahead with the articles, Paul. Oh, wait, Mark Gold?
The only point is because it's a change, I think we need to highlight it more than just kind of bury it in the, in the heading there. I don't know whether we bolded or we call it out, but I think it's important that we, people know it's six PM and not seven. Hey, Deb, you got that?
I got it.
Okay. You know, I'll go through one by one, I guess. Article one is remaining as is, the voting the trustees for the Gulfway bequest. I think we have two out of the three. I think we're still looking for a third.
Oh, so those are the correct, because I thought, so Francis is still on it? Okay.
Article two is, again, additional money for the legal budget, seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't, I'm not anticipating any changes with that. Article three is a hundred thousand dollars for the fire overtime, fifty coming from free cash or available funds in the treasury as it's written, the other fifty coming from the ambulance fund. Article four, we can modify slightly. We do have some numbers, or at least at this point in time, the total amount of the deficit is just over eighty-six thousand. I would recommend that we change the amount that we're taking from available funds down to sixty-two thousand. And the other twenty-five thousand will remain as is, coming from recreational, transfer from recreational daycare salaries.
Can we put this on, since, can we share screen and you have that on the screen, Lynn? So that residents and everyone else can follow on that? Because I know it's different from the, the older warrant that was posted on previous meetings.
Yeah, let me, let me work on that now.
And Paul, on those, none of those, can we say consent agenda on any of these or?
Yeah, I, I think you could probably bundle two, three, and four together. If we do some rearranging, you could probably do two, three, four, six, and seven together. Again, I think we have to pull article five because it's a nine-tenths vote. But all the other ones are simple majorities that if we, let's say we even exchanged article five with article seven, we could do the first six of them as just one, one article. It's all dealing with FY two thousand and twenty final adjustments.
Okay. And then you would say articles, so article seven would be where five is.
Right, our article, our article five would be the prior year bill. I'm sorry, article seven would now be the prior year bill.
Okay, do we, do you want, Lynn, should we vote on this becoming, those articles being part of a consent agenda?
I'm not, Rebecca, maybe you can chime in. I'm not quite sure we need to have those voted. I think, I think if we have an understanding that we're going to do it, but I know, I'll, I'll listen to what Rebecca has to say on, on that.
Um, so you don't need to, to my knowledge, you don't need to make a vote now if you, because ultimately what gets voted on is the motion at town meeting. And so.
Didn't you say you wanted this to be advertised, so we should want to print that in the warrant?
So if you, if you know that you want it printed in the warrant, it's probably preferable to make a vote on it. That way, everybody is well aware of it going into it.
Okay.
And Rebecca, do you have suggestions on how it's going to be printed in the warrant as a consent agenda?
In terms of how it, how it will actually look, you can indicate consent agenda and then separate articles listed underneath it. So either consent agenda one, I don't know how many consent agendas you want to have, but all the articles listed underneath that.
So maybe just right above where it says article two, we can say consent agenda will consist of article two through six?
Yep.
Okay. Marie, I'd like to have a discussion about consent agendas, if we're going to talk about that. Because personally, I think it sounds like a railroad system. And, and, you know, it, it gives no time for discussion. Nobody's, you know, people may be intimidated if they want to stand up and ask a question. And for the most part, these are the kinds of questions we, as fast as you can read them, you can vote on them. I, I'm not convinced consent agendas are, are beneficial to the town, especially when you've got limited attendance, when people who are showing up there are obviously showing up there for a reason. And then we're saying, well, we show up to vote, but we really don't want any discussions.
Well, Mark, I think that this meeting, we're going to have to have a lot of education before this meeting occurs. But I, and part of that can also be how does, because we're going to ask, does anyone want to pull an article from the consent agenda? And people will know, yes, I can want four pulled, I want three pulled. I think that residents actually appreciate it when we, we bundle things together instead of going and reading one by one by one. And there's also going to be the stress of this meeting compared to other meetings. We're going to be outside, the weather is not very well, could be very hot. It could be stressful for people to be out in this sort of group that they have not been in for months. I think that we're actually doing them a disservice by not trying to make this as streamlined a meeting as possible. We're not talking about, we're not putting the budget and capital and all those things in a consent agenda, but these are items that rarely are discussed.
May I also make a quick suggestion that you, as part of the pre-meeting discussions, have perhaps, whether it's Zoom or WebEx or what have you, some form of Q and A that people can do on any of the warrant articles. And that way, in advance, they can do, as part of the pre-meeting education that you spoke about, to determine if there are some significant questions on those, those articles.
Yeah, I was hoping in June to have put together three meetings and which it'll be Zoom meetings that people can either call in or speak or send emails ahead of time. And so I think we need to have a lot of education on this town meeting that we haven't had on any others. So I agree, that's what I was hoping to set up in June when people start to think and turn towards the town meeting. And the, the concept of consent agenda can be talked about then and how people can vote against a consent agenda if they want to pull one of the articles to discuss. So is it that we need to vote, since we're putting this on the warrant? I think we have to vote as a board on whether we feel comfortable putting two, three, four, and seven in a consent agenda.
Give her, I was going to rearrange them and exchange five and seven.
Okay, so it would be two, three.
Four, five, and six would be a consent agenda.
Five and six, okay. Which is five is seven.
So can I form a motion?
Can I ask, did, did we open up the warrant through a formal vote?
No, I don't think we did.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to open the warrant.
So moved.
Is there a, that was Richard Foster. Is there a second?
A second.
That was Tom Lakusha seconded. All those in favor, roll call vote. Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, do we need to re, do we need to vote on every article or just the changes, Paul?
I would probably change, just the changes, that we're changing the heading that the location be Long Meadow High School at six PM on June, June twenty-third with the rain date of June twenty-fourth is what we were going to add to that also.
Okay, is there a motion to approve those changes under the greetings?
So moved.
That was Tom moved it. Is there a second?
Richard Foster seconds.
Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, all these changes in the numbers, we don't need to vote on, though, do we? Because you made some changes in the numbers on the articles, Paul?
Well, we, we, I, I actually think we should if we're changing them again. There's, there's only a handful of them. But article four, as it's shown, I don't know if you can scroll up or down, Lynn, but article four would read, to see if we vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury to sum of sixty-two thousand, would be that new amount and the rest would remain the same. So we're, we're just, we're just reducing the amount of free cash taken from sixty-five to sixty-two thousand.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the change that Paul just, okay, that's Tom just moved it. Is there a second?
I get it.
Second, Mark Strange. Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, now, was there any other changes on the two, three, four? And?
No, with, just with the exception of, again, exchanging the numbers on five and seven, everything else is, is identical.
Okay, is there a motion to put on the warrant that consent agenda will be two, three, four, five, and six?
So moved, but.
Moved. Is there a second?
I get it.
Mark Strange seconded. Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, the next change, Paul?
Well, our, article eight is something that Mario Maza originally had said can wait. I didn't know if you wanted to eliminate it, maybe look at it in the fall. But that, that was one, if we want to eliminate one, that he suggested that that one could easily wait.
I guess with the new engineer, there'd be difficulties. Is there a motion to eliminate article eight?
I think we should keep it in.
Keep it in?
Yeah, I tell you, actually, Marie, I believe, and I'm not going to speak one way or the other, but I believe this project has already been developed and I believe they have cost estimates. So this, this is not likely requiring the engineer to redo anything. It's just a matter of issuing a purchase order. But Mario said he can let it wait. It is a hundred thousand dollars. It is pre-engineering money for our, our roads program. So I'd, I'd go along with Mario if he wants to defer for one year on it.
So is that a motion, Richard? To eliminate it?
No, that was just discussion.
Okay. If there's no motion on the floor, we'll, we'll just leave it in there.
I'll, I'll move to defer article eight, to remove article eight from the current town warrant.
That was Mark Gold. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so my feelings are, you know, if right now, like we said, we set money aside, we can always put it back in the fall if it's available. I don't know if it's really needed now and we need to leave ourselves enough wiggle room if things really start to collapse. So I'm going to support this. Richard, what are your thoughts?
Well, it, it is truly a deferrable item. It is, as we said last year when it was rejected by finance, which I didn't go along with, but the money is pre-planning. And at this particular time with the restraints we have, it, we're likely best to hold off on pre-planning.
Mark Gold?
Rich, I don't know the comments. I, I just want to, Rich, Rich, if you, I don't know if you have the warrant in front of you, but this is, there is, there is already a hundred thousand dollars appropriated. And, uh, according to Mario, it's a $400,000 engineering project. This is setting aside the second hundred thousand dollar allotment with the remaining $200,000 to be coming from, uh, future appropriations.
No, I don't believe so, Paul. I, this, this should be the hundred thousand dollars for the survey work.
We had, again, we, we did have a hundred thousand dollars appropriated already.
Uh, no, it was, it was turned down at the last town meeting.
All right, Mark Strange, do you have any, uh, comments on this?
Yeah, wait, wait a minute, Marie, let's, let's get confirmation from Paul. Paul, I believe it was, it was rejected at spring, at, uh, our last town meeting.
Yeah, bear with me. I'll look it up on the website.
Because I think the actual estimate's like 96, eight, or 98, nine, something in that, right at a hundred thousand dollars. And this is to do the survey work, uh, from on, on Route five down to the Enfield, uh, line, in preparation for getting this project ready to be submitted into the tip program.
Yeah, I'm just looking at last year's town meeting minutes.
Yeah, it went down in flames last year.
I don't believe so.
Well, it didn't really go down in flames, but it was defeated.
Well, it was a hot topic. That was it.
It was a hot, well, it was, it was a misunderstood topic, Maria. That's, that's unfortunate. Cause I see this year finances recommend it. You know, remember last year, they did not recommend it.
Yeah.
The, the, the minutes of last May's town meeting, article 10, it was a majority affirmative vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of producing preliminary survey work, for the possible reconstruction or reconfiguration of the southern end of Long Meadow Street Route five.
That's what I remember also.
Oh, and you were asking for another hundred, Richard.
Yes, so that original 500 was, I'm sorry, original 100,000 was voted last year.
That's not my understanding, because finance disapproved it and it was, it would, it failed the town meeting, a hundred thousand I'm talking about.
Then, uh, again, then these minutes are wrong or you.
Marie, I mean, Marie, you said it went down in flames and you're right.
But I think it might've been that you were asking for an extra hundred. But the point is, when regards to, I don't think there's, anyone's arguing to keep this in, but I would like it to be looked at again in the fall town meeting. Um, anything we're removing now should automatically be looked at at the next warrant.
Yeah, Marie?
Mm-hmm, Tom?
I mean, I think that, just like when it was approved last year, you know, that it, it sets us up for tip funds, which can save us, you know, can really work on that road. So I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you want to wait, because there might be, uh, you know, there could be federal funds available for road improvement is one of the ways to help get the economy back on track. And we should be prepared for it.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
No, I, Marie, I tell you, Tom's got a very valid point because the Fed, if they do come back with some type of strange stimulus, and this project is on, it's in the queue and starting to move forward, we could pick up funding for it pretty easily.
Okay, so, um, let's go for a roll call vote. Debbie?
Marie?
Uh, I'll say no.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
So that means it's not removed?
Correct.
Okay.
It's staying, okay.
Yeah, is that going to mess up your, your?
No, no, it's fine. It's accounted for already and it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, Marie, I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
You were voting for it to either be stay in the budget or be removed, correct?
To stay in the budget, because as you said, what if?
And a yes, yes votes, a yes vote was to keep it in the budget.
No, yes was to remove it. Cause motion was to remove it from the warrant.
Okay, but the way it passed out that has been left in the warrant anyway, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, my vote was wrong, but it passed anyway, so I'm not going to worry about it.
Okay. All right. Okay, what is the, um, nine?
Our, our article nine is protective equipment for four new, new recruits. We could theoretically move that one up, but why don't we just leave it?
Well, we could remove it, we could move it up to consent agenda. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, uh, yes, it easily falls into that category.
Well, uh, let's move it up.
Okay.
So is, let's see if, um, is there a motion to move article nine into consent agenda?
So moved.
That was Tom Lakusha. Is there a second?
Richard Foster seconds.
Okay, uh, the, um, any discussion? All right, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Sorry, um, want to go on to article 10?
Article 10 could easily be reduced. It's a, I'm sorry, removed. It's a small amount. However, if it is moving forward, the 300, I'm sorry, the $3,000 that we changed in article, original article four, I would like to add that. So it would be the sum of 7,0975 if it moves forward.
Okay, so moved.
So this is moving to remove it. Right, Paul?
I don't know what the motion was.
Saying, you're hoping to remove it, Paul, right?
Okay, if, if, yeah, okay, have the vote on that.
Okay.
Marie, wait for a motion, because the motion was to change it and leave it.
Now, I'm asking Paul, was, so we're, look, Tom, was your motion to remove it or to keep it?
It was to change it to 7,000, whatever, yeah.
Okay, so it was not to remove it, it was to change.
To make the change in the number, yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Mark Gold.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Why did you want to remove it? Um, Paul?
I, I didn't necessarily, but when I asked which ones could be removed, it's such a small amount, I thought it could easily wait. It would turn up in, um, next year's free cash. It would be moved in the fall if it wasn't moved now.
Okay, and would this be good for consent agenda also?
Uh, it, no, it's a little bit different and I think it requires a two, may require a two-thirds vote. I don't see there on anybody going into the operational stabilization fund, but I think I would keep it separate because it's, it's not necessarily a budget item, an operating budget item.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, uh, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, article 11, are you doing anything?
No, article 11 would remain as is. Article 12 would remain as is.
Okay. Um, so we don't need to vote on those because we voted already.
Right, article 13 now is, is the budget. It's the budget as you voted it in March.
But you just made changes to it? You recommended changes?
Right, if, 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 if what I had recommended on the previous discussion or accepted all the recommendation, the general fund budget would now be 64,511,255. The solid waste recycling enterprise budget would be 1,379,779. The water sewer and stormwater enterprise fund would remain as is. And the bottom line budget would be 71,899,165, or a total decrease of 674,445.
Is there a motion to approve that?
And again, that itemization is what I had sent you this afternoon, if anybody wanted the itemization of all that.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mark Gold.
Mark Gold seconded. Tom made the motion. Um, any further discussion? Richard Foster?
None.
Mark Gold?
None.
Mark Strange?
No.
Uh, Tom Lakusha?
None.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, article 14.
Marie, can, can I ask that, in the, in the paragraph underneath it, we note that this was modified from the originally approved budget, based on the update. So people understand that this isn't the, if you will, the March or the February budget, but rather a, 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 a May 5th budget?
Uh, that would be, I would also say we should put the amount that we decreased it by.
It's fine, I agree.
Now, the, the only other thing that I would bring to your attention is if the school committee, um, does not vote on the $350,000, uh, recommended reduction and they come up with a different number. It is, the original motion is, I believe, has to be inclusive of the school committee's budget. And then an amendment would have to be made to reconcile it back to the select board's budget.
All right, hold it. You've, state that again. What, what do we, if they don't approve the cuts?
Right, if, if, let's, let's say they only, let's say they're willing to take a $300,000 cut as opposed to 350. And i- and for some reason, we cannot agree, or, or the parties cannot agree on the final number. It is the, I believe it is the school committee's voted budget that has to be read in the original motion. And then an amendment would have to be offered by the select board to bring it to the select board's budget. And I, I will double check this with council, but I think we've gone through this in the past. Now, if, if the school committee comes up with only $300,000, and the select board is in agreement that that's a, you know, a, a, a fine number, then everyone would move forward on just one motion. But there may have to be amendments to the motion if the select board and the school committee do not agree on that bottom line school committee budget.
And they're meeting on Thursday?
Well, they're meeting and I don't want to say that they're going to have just one meeting on it. They may take a couple of weeks in order to come up with a final number. So it, it's just something that has to be on our radar screen and probably have discussion with them, you know, towards the end of May and the beginning of June that they're, you know, e- everyone is in agreement of how this is going to work, what number is going to be there. And if there's not an agreement in the number, and procedurally, we'll work this out with council. But that is my remembrance of how this has to, has to work at town meeting.
Okay.
So I just wanted to bring that out into the open now.
Uh, any questions for Paul on the procedure? No? Okay, we'll go on to article 14.
Article 14, again, according to my recommendations, uh, we went over earlier, the amount would be reduced to 44,089.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended article 14?
So moved.
That's Tom moved it. Is there a second?
Second by Richard Foster.
Okay, um, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, um, article 15, do you want to explain?
Article 15 again was one that could easily be postponed, um, until we have better knowledge of where we stand. Minimally within the recommendations that we had gone over earlier, um, the recommendation was to reduce this to $200,000. And then optionally, there was discussion that we could potentially just postpone this, um, and take care of this transfer in the fall.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we move article 15 to the fall town meeting.
So I'll second that, Mark Gold.
Okay, uh, discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, um, article 16.
Article 16 is the capital. Again, the recommendations that I had put forward were just to eliminate and/or, or mainly just to postpone two of the projects listed. The fire truck reserve for 75,000 and the fire department kitchen updates for $50,000. Uh, again, um, they could be addressed in the fall. Um, and then there was other discussion about potentially reducing or postponing other amounts on here, but you know, again, that's up to the board.
Okay, um, Richard, is there anything else you wanted to amend or change on this article 16?
Well, it all depends on how much money, because I could slash about 60% of this and defer it. So I, Paul's done a good job on it. If they're happy, wouldn't the rest of the board's happy? But I still think there's a lot of stuff that we're in a tight spot that we could postpone and kick it down the road for a year.
I would say, Rich, I imagine many of these projects will not have started even by the fall. Um, we could potentially reduce them in the fall if necessary.
That, that's true. You know, like, Paul, you're like Williams Energy Management Systems. The world is not going to stop spinning if we don't put that energy management system in a building that we're considering getting rid of.
No, I, I agree. I, I said, I, I didn't want to offend you, Ri- Rich, Richard, by taking these out. I thought I was doing a, a good thing.
No, well, you, uh, Marie, you should share the email that I gave you.
No, okay.
So, so I think Paul's quite, Paul Pester's question is, is a good one. And that is, a lot of these won't have been, even be started before the fall. And so the question I have is, are we better off, you know, appropriating the money, not spending it and then rescinding it in the fall if times get tough? Or we better off not appropriating it now, holding it in abeyance, and then if things are okay, then re, then appropriate it in the fall? And I, I would think it's easier to, you know, hold it back. And we always said we wanted to do a second round of, of capital, just do that in the fall. And just pull, like Richard said, we can pull that half of these out now.
Um, the only issue I have is that what we always say is this is the annual town meeting. And we don't want to really burden the fall town meeting if we, we don't need to. So I think to say we're splitting half of these up and they're not going to save time and it's not as if we're spending the money. And then if we have to make the cuts in the fall, because there's financial issues, then the town will realize we're making additional cuts. If we make them now and then plow them back in, it looks like, oh, we've suddenly gone in on a spending spree. So I, I don't see any value in cutting them now. And also it sort of undercuts the concept of our annual budget and our annual meeting.
And that's, that's fine, Maria. I guess the question is, what does it take to rescind these in the fall? Is it a simple majority? If that's all it is, that's fine. Let's just do it.
Yeah, it would be a simple majority to rescind them, yes.
Okay, and let's just approve them, let them go forward and recognize, and, and more importantly, it, I guess this is for Lynn. Can Lynn put a freeze on spending these until we know where the, that, that there's really enough money to do that? So that if we need to, we can hold off spending these.
Lynn is the chief procurement officer and has to sign contracts. They would, uh, most of these, if not all of them, would require a contract. So, and she, you know, obviously is the supervisor of all the department heads who would be spending them. So the answer is yes, you would have the authority to do such.
Good.
I want to add one more thing is, what we'll discuss later is, I'm sure, I think we're probably looking at a September fall meeting. Um, I think if we're looking at another wave of the COVID-19 during flu season, we might want to look at an earlier town meeting rather than a later one. So it, this, we're talking about delaying cuts, uh, another round of cuts just a few months.
So, so Marie, just to follow up, if, just to make tonight a little quicker, if we don't have to spend these, if we don't have to, why don't we just leave it the way it is it's voted on? I know Paul suggested we pull out the fire truck reserve and the kitchen update, but we not, don't have to do anything about those and just say, hey Lynn, let's not, you know, Lynn's listening, it's not like talking about it. But, you know, let's just not spend them and see what happens in the fall, rather than go through a vote to formally pull those out.
Well, I think we have to show we're making an effort to make the cuts. Well, I think we have to show we're making an effort to make the cuts from the side that we're, we're, our revenues that we're now estimating, so I, I think-
But we're going to put a freeze on everything.
Well, Mark, the only, only thing I would, I would say is that, um, the, the two that I recommended to be taken out, um, I would ask that they be taken out, so everything, we have a balanced budget that is going forward. E- e- everything would be in balance at the end of that town meeting. If you leave them in, they, we're going to be out of balance by that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with knowing we have all sorts of moving parts before the tax rate is set, so, um, you know, technically, we, we would have a budget that's out of balance. It's not the end of the world, doesn't have to be balanced until sometime later in the fall. Up to you.
Tom?
Yeah, and I, I think it's appropriate, because we are asking the school department to cut back on a lot of their, uh, spending, so we should be taking this out, I agree.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, I agree.
Um, Richard, did you want to add anything else?
Um, no, it's, it's still the same comments, I, I understand it can go either way, we can freeze it if, if we want to show cuts, but I, I just think our cuts could be so much more significant than they are right now on this list in front of me. And I think Paul would agree, like, even the energies, there's two energy systems for schools that were, we've got SOIs out to, to, uh, remove and to replace, and I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why we're going to be doing energy management systems on buildings that we've clearly signaled that we want to get rid of. Uh, there's many things in here that can be delayed, uh, but I'll go with the board, if the board wants to approve this and put it at bay and just drop off a couple as customary, that's fine. But I, I think there should be a clear signal from this board, w- we, we furloughed people. And now we've got projects on here which I think every board member would agree is not needed in this period of time.
Okay, is there a roll call vote now? Debbie?
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, there, I don't think there's been a motion, right?
I think motion was made by, I thought we had a motion. Is there a motion to, uh, make the cuts that, uh, Paul recommended?
So moved, for the tri- fire truck reserve and the fire department kitchen updates. Removed.
Is there a second?
Article seventeen, yeah.
Is there a second?
I can.
Mark Strange seconded it. All right, um, all those in favor, a roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes, and I wish I could say with conditions, but I realize I can't, so yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, let's move on to Article seventeen.
Seventeen and eighteen are two projects that Mario said can be postponed.
That's not what yours notes say, Paul.
I'm sorry, you're right, I, I'm sorry, yeah, seventeen and nineteen say move forward, eighteen seek to be postponed, you're right.
Okay, so there's, uh, no changes on Article seventeen?
No, no changes in Article seventeen, eighteen is one that can be postponed, and nineteen, there will be no changes.
Okay, is there a motion to remove Article eighteen?
So moved.
That was, um, Tom Lakusha, is there a second?
Second.
Mark Strange seconded, um, discussion?
Yeah, Marie, I'll argue against it, this is a money that comes out of a water stabilization account, not out of the general revenue, I think the, you know, it, 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 it mostly Ma- Mario says it can wait because perhaps of engineering, but, you know, our goal is to get all the water mains up, up to a certain size. I'd say leave it in, because, again, it's a different source of revenue, we need to do it, and having it there, I don't know, may even be a capital, federal capital project for all I know.
Um, any further discussion, Richard?
Yes, I, I totally agree with what Mark's saying, he, he took the words right out of my mouth, because these do not really come back against our base budget and, and our tax base, they're going off on special funds.
Okay, um, Tom? Any further discussion?
Uh, no, I, I guess the only thing I know, I was wondering if it's in Converse Street, if it was going to connect it all to the new TBW. I guess it probably wasn't.
No, they, I had asked about this, Tom, they said it's Converse Street between Route five and, and Laurel, it's that side, a part of Converse.
Okay, great.
I ca- I asked the last time, I had the same question.
Okay, uh, Mark Strange?
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, with Mark and Richard.
Okay, all right, roll call vote?
Marie, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Um, I, just, I just wanted to clarify, I think that some of the rationale for wanting to see if these items would be removed or not, was not necessarily budget related, like this one, it was more just to um, reduce the warrant articles in the event that we, you know, had to condense town meeting, um, knowing the situation that we're in, so I, I don't know that this one particularly was about, um, the budget, it was more about um, putting this off until a September town meeting, so that our, if it saved one vote at the meeting and condensed it down.
Mm-hmm.
So, the motion is for Article eighteen to be removed?
Be removed, yes. Okay, roll call vote?
And, and this-
Marie?
This roll call is on Article eighteen?
Article eighteen and a yes vote for it will remove it. Uh, Debbie?
Marie?
Um, yes.
Richard?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Mark Gold?
No.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, on Article nineteen, there's no change to it?
Yeah. Um, Art- Article twenty, um, the, the grant that the chief was, um, looking to get, obviously, is, has been, uh, postponed at the federal level, and it's not going to materialize in the timetable that he had hoped for. Um, he is actually looking to move forward with the ambulance purchase, but he would also like to get the, um, the, the automated stretcher, which is another thirty-two thousand dollars, so this amount would change to three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars if it moved forward.
Okay. Um, and he says he needs that now, and, well, it's coming from the ambulance fund, so the money's-
Right, it, 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 it's coming from the ambulance fund.
Okay, so the only change you're looking for is to increase the amount?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, and a discussion, um, oh, actually, yeah, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that motion to make adjustments to the mark on Article twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mark Strange seconded, um, discussion, uh, Richard Foster?
Yeah, any clarification, Paul, this is for a third ambulance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mark Gold?
I, I voted against this article the first time it came around, I'm likely to vote against it this time.
Um, Tom, did you have any questions or discussion?
No.
Mark Strange? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to Article twenty-one, is there any change in that?
No, twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three are as is.
Now-
Into the community preservation ones, beginning with Article twenty-four.
Now, can we consent agenda CPCs?
Yes, actually, we, we could consent, I would have to say we could consent all of them together. Um, the only question is, there are some that the Community Preservation Committee has actually said you can hold off on, um, beginning with Article twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. So, depending on which ones move forward, I think you could bunch them all together.
Okay, so first is, we have to have, uh, see if there's a motion to not include, um, what are the numbers, twenty-
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are the ones in question.
Okay.
Marie, if we're going to consent agenda these, not including them doesn't save us any time.
Oh, it does, it does, because no one's going to consent agenda in Article thirty.
All right, I, I'm not even sure. Well, then, then do all but thirty, but, all I'm saying is, is, you know, we're not saving any money, because the community preservation account is a, is a separate account from the town budget. So, just put twenty-four, five, six, seven, eight, nine together, and then do thirty separately. So, I'll move that we put together-
If they're willing to-
Twenty-nine is-
If they're willing to hold, CPC's willing to hold thirty, I mean, we're going to be there forty-five minutes.
All I'm saying is, let's put twenty-four through twenty-nine together in a consent agenda, that's my motion.
Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, um, discussion, Richard?
Yeah, I was wondering, Mark, what's, uh, what's your reason for going against the recommendations from CPC?
Because they're, I, I'm, I think their recommendations were to not vote on them, so we have one less thing to vote on. But we're taking them as one motion, it's, it's not that they don't think the money is useful, they're not saying no longer spend this money, they're saying hold it till the fall, well, we don't need to hold these things, and if you look at some of them, I mean, the Japanese knot weed, it's a, it's a seasonal thing, we ought to take care of it, you know, Russell Fields, we ought to take care of while we can't, so all I'm saying is, it's not saving us any time by holding them. We've got the funds in a separate account, let's just do it.
No, it is. Mark, Richard?
Yeah, I was going to say, okay, I, I just wondered what the justification was, uh, because I, I haven't had any conversations with the CPC folks, uh, we're going on what Mario said that he was trying to reduce the elements, uh, is, Lynn, is that your understanding, the CPC was also responding on trying to reduce the amount of, of motions?
That, that was, that was the question that I asked Steve Weiss, that if, if there were any that can be postponed, because the original thought process was to lower the amount of warrant articles.
Okay, so it wasn't, there wasn't anything to deal with monetary issues in our-
Nothing to deal with monetary, only to deal with the time it takes at town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and you've now increased town meeting by doing this. Um, um, okay, Mark Gold?
I have no, I, I have no comment, I don't know, what, what do you mean we increased town meeting by doing this?
Oh, because, uh, Article thirty is going to take you forty-five minutes.
We haven't gotten there, we may withdraw Article thirty when we're done with this vote.
Oh, okay, uh, Mark Strange?
Uh, am I commenting or voting?
Commenting.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with, with Mark, and that it seems like the prudent thing to do is, is to put all this, the CPC articles onto a consent, consent agenda minus Article thirty, I think it'll make it go faster, and, and include, include these important projects, minus Article thirty.
All right, any other discussion?
Um, Marie.
Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I don't know if it's our role, as a select board, to take these articles, um, and then just eliminate one of them from a consent agenda? I mean, I don't see, if, if the town residents want to eliminate thirty, then they'll re- eliminate thirty. You know, I don't see why we would take, I don't see if that's our pur- purview, to, to say, well, we're going to put all these on the consent agenda except for the one that perhaps, for some reason, people don't like. It's, it's their, it's CPC made this list, you know? Uh, I would actually see us just re, you know, take out the ones, you know, from twenty-seven on. It would just be easier, it'd be straightforward, be, we'd be following their recommendations, rather than coming in with our own sort of view that, well, we don't like thirty, so we're going to have this, you know, I don't know where we're coming from.
Well, we're-
Our own place.
Motion, Tom, the motion is not to remove thirty, the remotion is just consent agenda, or at the-
It's a consent agenda excluding one item.
Yeah, Mark Strange?
So, if, if we're operating on the theory that, um, we want to make, we want to shorten this meeting as much as possible, and putting, putting together a consent agenda for the CPC articles that we, we think will pass, um, without, without comment, um, makes sense. Taking out Article thirty and putting it, pushing it to September of the fall meeting, particularly when the finance committee hasn't recommended it, I think that's also prudent, uh, again, if you're looking at time efficiency for the meeting.
Okay.
Well, we haven't got to Article thirty yet, Marie, we're s- we're only dealing with twenty-nine backwards.
Right, so the motion that's on the floor now is consent agenda for, could you scroll it back, is it? Twenty-
Twenty-four, twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Through twenty-nine. Uh, I have to remember, I'm, did we have a motion to that effect on the floor?
Yes, I made the motion, and Mark Str- Strange seconded it.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, and this is to accept him as consent agenda.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Okay, now, Article thirty. Um, um, I guess the motion would be, are we going to postpone Article thirty? Is there a motion to postpone it or remove, it'd be ca- actually, the motion would be to remove from the warrant, to be heard in the fall?
I, 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 I would suggest that you keep it on there, um, in all honesty, you, you've, you've kept the other ones on there, it's separated, keep it on there, and, but it's taken its course.
Yeah, I think-
I agree with Paul.
I think we have to, if we can't pick and, we can't cherry pick what we want to treat differently if CPC can put it together, but is there a motion to do that?
We don't have to, we're just there, leave it.
No, but I'm, there's no motion to, to withdraw it? Okay, all right, so no ma- motion was, was made?
Marie, I, I don't, Marie, I don't think we can legally withdraw a CPC, uh, motion.
If CPC says they can hold, it was their say, they said they could hold it, but then we're treating-
But I mean, that is their call.
Yes, so they did say we could hold it, but no one's holding it.
Right, okay.
Okay, Article thirty-one, there's no changes on that?
Correct.
Article thirty-two, what was the change on that?
Ar- Article thirty-two is, is, um, again, it's a correction from last year, um, there was some paperwork that never made it into Boston. Um, you know, it's, it's not life or death, if we had to wait another year or till the fall, wouldn't it be a big deal? Um, so, you know, the question is, do you want to move forward with it, make the correction now, or do you want to make the correction in the fall?
Um, I don't know how people feel, I would say the fall, I don't think many people are seeing it Airbnb's these days. Uh, is there a motion to remove Article thirty-two, though?
So moved.
That's Tom, is there a second?
Second it.
Mark Strange seconded, all right, discussion, uh, Richard Foster?
Uh, no, I don't have a discussion on this one, Marie.
Okay, Mark Gold?
No.
Uh, Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Okay, so, roll call vote, and a, uh, if you vote for this, it's voting for removal of Article thirty-two.
Yeah, who was the-
The motion?
Who, who was the sponsor on this, Marie, was this, uh, sponsored by the town?
I think it was the building department, right?
Yeah.
Um,
Marie, was there a formal motion and second on this?
Yes, there was, the motion was made by Tom and seconded by Mark Strange, is that correct?
Yeah, to move in the fall meeting.
To, to remove Article thirty-two. Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll look at removing Article thirty-three.
Article thirty-three is, is more of a procedure that the, uh, select board uses on the warrant. Um, kind of, just sets up some timetables, so we don't have to open and close and get late warrant articles while things are in the voted process.
And so, uh, we're looking to remove Article thirty-three to keep the town meeting shorter, correct?
So moved, Marie.
And that's Tom moved that, is there a second?
Again. When you say removed, you say, say defer it till the fall?
Deferred to the fall, removed from this warrant. Um, discussion, Richard Foster?
No discussion, Marie.
Uh, Mark Gold?
I, I like the motion, I, I'll probably vote for it just to defer, because it doesn't go into effect until the spring town meeting.
Um, Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Uh, Tom Lakusha?
No.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, were you gonna say something?
Yes, oh, I was just gonna say, and this is to defer it to the fall. That's what a yes means.
Okay, Richard?
Uh, yes, I like the motion also, Mark, but I think we can defer to fall without any adverse impacts. So my, uh, yes vote.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, now Article thirty-four?
Uh, thirty-four, I'm not a hundred percent sure on. The necessity of, I, 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 I'm at a loss to give you an explanation, quite honestly, Lynn, I don't know if you can jump in on this one.
I don't know how immediate it is. I know that they had been working on some of these changes and had reviewed them with town council. Uh, but I, I don't know the immediate need of, of making these.
Is this conservation?
Yes.
Oh. Can we check with them?
Uh, I'm happy to do that, I can.
I mean, can't they always at town meeting vote to take no action just to move it along?
Right, that would probably be the best thing, because if we check with them, you'd have to come back and then have a vote on it, Marie.
But just leave it on, Marie, and if they, and encourage them to take no action if it can be deferred.
Okay, all right, all right, so no action on, uh, thirty-four. All right, uh, I'll have a note, talk to Al, all right, what's next?
Um, thirty-five was something that had required the historic district commission to act on, uh, give a recommendation. As much as this was voted last year, the recommendation wasn't in place. Um, I'm not quite sure, Lynn, if you spoke into Tim Casey about their meeting abilities, they have a, um, a, a, a position on this or not.
Um, I know, sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm done.
I, I know they are able to meet, they've been, um, I have talked to him about meeting virtually. Um, this was to fix an error, right, that, that occurred at a previous town meeting?
Right, the last town meeting did not have their approval, and this, that, that's why their meeting is required, um, in order to get their approval before this can move forward and be finalized.
Well, but there's no rush on it. It's not gonna make a difference if we do it now in June or we do it in September. Because they've been.
Correct, I don't think it's going to have much impact on one way or another.
So Marie, can we make a motion to move it back to the, uh, committee, to their?
And we either have to keep it on or we have to defer it to the fall. And so is there a motion to?
Yeah, I'll move that we defer to the fall town meeting. We, we remove warrant with the probability of moving it on, putting it on the fall town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second by Richard.
Okay, um, discussion, Richard?
No discussion.
Mark Gold?
No.
Uh, Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, now Articles thirty-six and thirty-seven, Walter Gunn wants to keep. I saw he called in as, um, is it, uh, okay with the board if I ask Walter if a deferral till September is acceptable?
Sure.
Okay, Walter, are you still there? I, I don't have a full screen, is he still, i- is he still on?
It's showing he's here as a participant.
There he is.
Walter?
Yeah.
Hi, so we wanted your opinion on why you wanted to keep the zoning bylaw articles in, uh, the June meeting? Because we're trying to get as much as we can into September.
Walter's muted.
Oh, Walter, I thought he was there.
I'm working on it.
Oh, okay.
Now?
Yeah, we got you.
Yes.
Okay.
Walter, so.
Okay, we have, we have, hi, thank you. Yes.
So wanted to know, um, yes, can you hear me? Why, why you feel?
Okay, so. Okay, we have, uh, public hearings, uh, this Wednesday. We have two sets of, uh, of, of hearings. One is a, um, a citizen petition, which is, um, I believe Article forty-one, forty-two, something like that. And then we have, uh, town initiated, uh, zoning changes, which are, uh, regarding, um, the demolition or the replacement of, uh, uh, structures that are destroyed. And, and something about garages. So, uh, none of these are urgent, but the citizen petition is, unfortunately, I don't know what the, uh, the governor's, uh, policy is on the time extension of these. Uh, zoning of permitting time and permitting times, I don't know what would be considered if this citizen petition. Uh, we could certainly ask the petitioner to withdraw this and put it into the fall.
I've talked to, um, the citizen about that, but, so you're willing to, well, let's look at thirty-six and thirty-seven first. Uh, you feel that the planning board would be willing to defer thirty-six and thirty-seven?
Uh, thirty-six, those, those two are the ones about the, uh, the demolition, or the fire to buildings and.
And private garage?
Um, I'm trying to read now, thirty-six, uh, 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 to see the time. Um, well, no, I, I don't think any of them are, are urgent. Um, as long as the petitioner wants to, see, once these are put on, they start a time, a timing process. So if, if the petitioners are willing to remove these, I have, um, our board has nothing to do with any of these warrant articles. They're not, um, the only ones we created were the ones that are related to the gas pipe one.
Right.
And the, um, the metering station, those are, are.
So Lynn, thirty-six and thirty-seven comes from your department?
Yes.
Uh, no, they don't.
Uh, one of them did, thirty-six.
Okay, is.
What about the other one?
The garage?
Yeah, thirty-seven as well.
And what about thirty-eight?
Not thirty-eight, no.
Okay, so is there a motion to, um, remove and defer Article thirty-six and thirty-seven?
So moved.
Okay, that was Tom, is there a second?
Richard Foster seconds.
All right, discussion, Richard?
I have no discussion.
Uh, Mark Gold, discussion?
None.
Tom Lakusha?
None.
Mark Strange?
None.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and Walter on thirty-eight, do you, um, since this came from your committee, did you want to keep that on? Walter? I think I lost him again.
He's muted.
He's muted.
Mike? Someone keeps muting me, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, no, again, these were, again, time sensitive, um, items that were related to the metering station, so. Uh, Bruce Colton, I think, and, uh, Mark Strange, I believe you guys worked on these things?
Mm-hmm.
What do you feel?
I think we should keep it in because it is time sensitive.
Okay, so is, is there any motion to remove it? Okay, all right, it stays. Now let's go to thirty-nine, I think that one was important to the planning board. Was it? Uh, thirty-nine, did you want?
Okay, see these?
He says thirty-nine.
Again, this could probably be delayed. This is something we did initiate on our planning board, it's just to, uh, clarify it. It's a simple, was a sort of a housekeeping item that sort of resulted from a previous, um, site and design project we had in here in town. And that was just a, uh, that could wait probably till fall.
Are you sure it's not going to pop its head up again?
Um, it could, yes, but, you know, again, we're dealing with difficult times and difficult procedures. So, um, if you feel it's important and you know, you know why it's there, um, leave it in.
We can only, we can always bring it back in the fall, that's the intent.
Yeah, but this, we're.
I guess you could, that's true, Mark.
Yep. Well, we're going into the building season, and, and I think that this, if I'm correct with what the location is with this, kind of south end of town. You know, that it's been, uh, in process for quite a long time, and I don't know if we should keep it, you know, delay it any longer. But this motion is so vague, it doesn't really explain any details what's going on.
Is there anyone who's putting a motion on the floor?
Hey Walter, you need to mute your phone. Hey Walter, you need to mute your phone.
Okay, so.
Ah, it's funny, Rich.
Okay, so.
There's no one who's putting a motion on, so let's move on to forty. So, um, Mark Strange, do you want to keep?
Let's keep it.
Okay.
Okay.
What's next?
Yeah, forty is the same as our previous thirty-eight.
All right, so what's next?
Citizen's petition.
Okay, the rest are citizen petitions?
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to, um, I've talked to the petitioner considering to act, but we can't remove them.
Marie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Marie?
I can hear you.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have our, again, we have a public hearing on these, uh, matters on Wednesday night. And I would be happy to address the petitioner and ask him to allow these to be continued to maybe another date at this point.
All right, sounds good, let me know how that goes.
Yeah, Marie?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, what I was trying to say is, I don't know if everybody else is getting the same thing I'm getting, but we're getting, become, yeah, piling up on somebody.
When can you, when can you mute people?
You're echoing us.
So what's happening is someone's watching it on L C.
There we go, okay.
There we go, okay.
Oh, no. Okay, so is there a motion to close the warrant?
Okay, so is there a motion to close?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Walter?
Okay, Walter?
Yes.
Can you turn, can you, uh, mute?
Yeah, I'm gonna mute, I just want to make sure that, uh, you're gonna close the warrant. So would the petitioner on, on these citizen petitions, would he have to just withdraw at the town meeting?
It would have to get town meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just need that information so I can discuss this on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, I'm now muting. Good night.
Good night, all right, um, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Um, this is to close the warrant?
To close the warrant.
Yes.
Okay, I have Richard making the motion, who seconded it?
I did, Mark Gold.
Mark, okay, and did, what happened with, um, forty-three, the, the other citizen petition, is that?
We can't do anything with it, it has to stay on there. It's, uh, forty-two and forty-three, right?
Forty-one and forty-two, Walter was gonna talk to the petitioner, and then there's forty-three, that's a different one?
All the petition articles have to stay on.
Yeah.
They have to be removed at town meeting.
And who is the mover on forty-three? Is anyone?
Forty-three's on billboard signs and other advertising.
I know, all right, so I'll, we'll figure that out later and contact, yeah. So, a, a roll call vote on closing the warrant?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go on to the next thing, which is town boards and committee interview process. Right, we've got another echo. Oh, it's Mar, Walter's back, Walter, oh, there.
No, I'm not back, I'm gone.
Okay. All right, um, so you'll see that the bylaw says that we have to interview in a public meeting.
Lynn, can you, can you mute Walter Gunn, Lynn, thank you.
Okay, um, so I think we're just gonna have to pick a date, and we're just gonna have to, you know, power through. There's an awful lot of interviews to be done, but there's a lot of work. So I want to know if people are up to, um, having an extra meeting next week. I just need, I just need two other people, I need a quorum. Um, I don't need all five for these interviews. Uh, and then we'll be voting at the following meeting. I think we have to wait seven days or something, don't we, Mark Gold?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'd have to be voting, we'd get as many as we could done, then we could roll some into the next meeting, and then we would vote on the first meeting in June. So, um, how, it, who would be available on Monday, next Monday? Uh, Mark Gold, um, anyone else?
Yes, most likely, Richard.
Richard, okay. Um, Tom and Mark, is it okay if we, we get the interviews and you can watch them? You can send us questions if you have questions for the, uh, board and committee members.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Okay, uh, Mark Strange, is that okay to go that way?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so, uh, anything else we, you wanted us to discuss, Lynn, in regards to the, um, boards and committee interview process?
No, um, no, so just to clarify, this meeting next Monday will be to hold interviews?
To actually hold the interviews.
Okay, so you'll need, um, Debbie or some, someone will reach out to these applicants to let them know they should attend?
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll talk to Debbie tomorrow and we'll figure out how to start lining as many people up as we can. And, um, Mark and Richard, do you care what time we start?
Seven o'clock's good for me.
Okay, all right, so we'll do seven o'clock and I'll just see how many people we can line up.
The A.M. or P.
Oh, P.M.
Hey Lynn, can you stop sharing your screen just so we can get back to the interview?
Sure, that was the, um, boarding committee, um.
Okay.
Bylaws.
Thanks.
All right, so moving on down to quarterly cash investment report. Paul, you want to talk about that?
Um, yeah, very quickly from Cheryl Kudnick, the, the treasure collector. Um, we were a little bit out of compliance in one area about the eight million dollar provision, um, with, I believe, months in savings bank for a short period of time. Dealing with some transfer of funds into the account that was rectified, uh, in early April. All the other provisions of the investment policy were, were intact. Um, all received the highest rating from very bank, so they're all in a green rating, the highest safety rating. Um, she mentions that the Fed Reserve had cut banks, uh, bank interest rates twice. We're starting to see, um, some minor declines in our rate of return on some of our investments. Um, she had to go out, she took a C.D. out, um, or was going to renew a. She had to go out, she took a CD out, um, or was going to renew a CD, but found a better interest rate in a money market account for one point seven percent, which is fairly phenomenal at this point in time for, uh, for a money market account. I give her credit for that. I think the big thing that needs to be shared with the board is that with the, um, downfall of the market in that quarter, mainly in the month of March two thousand and twenty, our OPEB fund balance had dropped fairly considerably, um, to the point where we had lost some of our principal. By the end of March, we were down forty-five thousand dollars. So all the earnings that we had accumulated prior, um, were wiped out. I imagine we have gained that back with the, with the market coming back up from somewhere in the eighteen thousand dollar range to the twenty-three or twenty-four thousand dollar range. But we'll have to wait till we get the next reports on that. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, it's probably the most important thing on the report here. And then, uh, Cheryl says that the decrease in the, uh, cash on hand for the quarter was, was mainly caused by, you know, one, um, the OPEB loss of, of fund balance, um, but also the fact that we were making some hefty payments for the, uh, capital projects at the Council on Aging and the DPW, uh, where that money had been accumulated prior to the quarter. So those, those payments out were, um, again, just drawing down on our bond proceeds. Usually, the first quarter of the calendar year, it's a pretty hefty amount of cash that comes in because we normally have, not only do we have our, our quarterly cash payment for property taxes, but we send out our large motor vehicle excise tax commitment and normally have a water and sewer commitment. So we're usually, um, have a very positive cash number when it comes to that, that quarter. However, this year was a little bit different for those reasons I just explained. Um, and I think that's a fairly quick summary.
Okay, any questions, Mark Gold?
No, none.
Richard Foster?
None.
Uh, Tom Lakusha?
None.
Mark Strange? Okay, all right, no questions. I realized, uh, we have to roll back to a previous item, which was the warrant. Where is the article that we voted to put on the warrant? Where are you gonna place that one?
I think you had made a recommendation, Marie, that, um, I think it was going to be placed right after we did the capital items.
Well, I, that was going to be a recommendation I was gonna make to this board and I forgot to make it.
Oh, I mean, it's, 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 it's fine, usually, um, yeah, I mean, we can put it anywhere, quite honestly, if you put it as the first one, but, uh, you know, I thought it would go, let's see, twenty-one? Maybe if we put it right before the community preservation, kind of right in the, I'll say in the middle, but, maybe about two-thirds in, or if you want it sooner, we can put it before the capital and have it right after the operating budget ones.
Uh, Richard, how do you feel about the location of that, uh, warrant article?
Oh, I, I have no preference, Marie.
Mark Gold?
I have no preference, that Paul's suggestion's fine.
Mark Strange?
Same.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, no preference.
Okay, yeah, so at the end of the budget before CPC will be fine.
Well, it, it, those, those are two different spots, so.
Oh, it is?
It's either, it's either at the end of the operating budget or at the end of, and we do all the capital.
Uh, where do you recommend?
I'm gonna say that we do it at the end of the operating budget. I think it's, it's more of a discussion on operations than it is on capital. So, um, it would go after Article.
After thirteen.
After thirteen or four, yeah, even after thirteen or, I mean, after fourteen, but yeah, after thirteen is fine.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to clarify that before we moved on. All right, thank you, so now let's go on to, um, Lynn, do you want to talk about the Attorney General? Because we don't have to do a vote on that, uh, cash investment report. Do we have to vote to accept that, Paul?
Um, no, there's, there's no need to vote on it. I mean, you normally have, but whether you vote or don't vote, there's, there's, it's gonna make no difference.
All right, is there a motion to accept the, uh, cash investment report?
So moved.
That's Tom, is there a second?
Second, Mark Gold.
Okay, uh, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, Lynn, do you want to talk to us about the Attorney General guidance on local authority amid COVID nineteen?
Yes, uh, just, I just wanted to make the board aware that the, um, Attorney General's office had provided guidance. They're getting questions from many municipalities just on, on certain roles, um, what select boards can do, what, um, what boards of health can do. So I just wanted to provide that, um, for conversation if, if conversation was needed. I know there had been a question, um, I think it was last week about masks and who had authority to do something on that. And that, uh, AG's guidance spoke directly to masking, um, and it is a board of health role. I've been following a lot of the conversation across the state and so many cities and towns are grappling with a lot of the same things that we are and, um, who has local authority to enact certain things. So I just, I wanted this here for, um, clarity for the board in case there are any questions about some of the actions taken.
Okay, Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I think, Lynn, that was my, me who was doing the questioning about masks and mask authorization. I guess the, the question that it really brings up though, and, and I didn't comment on this one, Beverly is here because it seemed to me it's not her thing, but it's, it's enforcement because I know that this, the governor's left that up to the local community for enforcement. And, and this all arose because I was getting calls from people saying we were shopping in, fill in the blank, Armadas, Big Y, whatever. And, and people were there, weren't wearing masks and they're putting my health at risk and how can we enforce it? And I guess the question is, is the town feel the authority to, to enforce this? Or are we leaving it to the, to, to the, you know, commercial operation to do their own enforcing?
Um, the, the town enforces, I need to, um, look at the governor's order again, um, but the, yeah, it's up to the locals to enforce it. But that being said, there will need to be partnership and personal responsibility to make sure that this is being done the right way.
Okay, Richard, do you have any questions for Lynn?
No.
Okay, Mark Strange?
No.
Tom?
Uh, no questions, just a comment that it was helpful to see, um, you know, what options we have, so.
Okay, thank you Lynn, do you want to talk a little bit about the adoption of MGL C one-ten-G?
Yes, um, so this is also another change that's a result of, uh, COVID coronavirus. How to virtual, get virtual or electronic signatures on documents and, um, their, the legal, uh, standing that they hold. So attached to your agenda is a summary from KP Law. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel. And it, this also came up at a time, um, right after you voted on the ever-source petitions. There was some question circulating about getting signatures on documents. So this would have been helpful to have and have you vote on at the last meeting. But we'll deal with it now. If the board is interested in this, um, there is a very specific vote you could take to authorize, um, electronic signature on, uh, documents that, um, need a board signature. And they would hold the full weight as if it were an original signature. And I did clarify with town council tonight because there did, uh, it, it has to be filed with the Registry of Deeds after your vote, it needs to be certified by the town clerk and then filed. I did clarify, uh, tonight with him, I'm just gonna try to find that email here. Um, so it's, it's just a broad vote that the board would take to allow electronic signatures. And, um, yeah, that, that was pretty much it.
Any questions on that, Richard?
No, I don't, would you like a motion?
Uh, well, let me see if there's any questions before we go ahead. Mark Gold, any question?
It, just a question, if, if this is limited to the duration of the emergency, uh, that the governor's declared? Lynn, do you know if this is a limited or is this long-term?
Long-term.
Let me just take a look. Uh, I don't, it doesn't specify that it is limited. But I, I can, if, if that makes a difference one way or the other, I'm happy to look into that and let you know before you fully vote on it.
No, it's fine.
Uh, Mark Strange, any questions for Lynn on this issue?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Tom?
No, no questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that, I'll, I'll make a motion, I'm gonna read from this thing that, I'll move that the select board of town of Long Meadow, hereby recognize and accepts the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one-ten-G regarding electronic signatures, and that its members will henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or with wedding signatures, and that both will carry the same legal weight and effect.
Okay. Is there a second? Mark Strange seconded it. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, I just wanted to check Debbie if we're going to set up interviews for next Monday? Is that gonna work for you and is there a time that's better for you? If Monday doesn't work, can we move it to another day?
I'm not sure how we're gonna do this, I'll just, I guess we'll have to, um, just tell them when to show up as opposed to normally I would say, you know, is this meeting better for you? We kind of don't have a choice, we just have to say be here at this time.
Yeah, it would be a call-in, people would call in, they didn't, they wouldn't even have to.
Yeah.
And, um, I think we'd have a, a series, a couple of hours to see. And if they can't make that, they can make our next select board meeting. I just don't want to get our select board meeting next one jammed. So we'll talk about it more later, but if, if, if Monday will work with you, we'll, we'll start spreading the word on that.
Hey Marie, I'm flexible with time and date, so, you know, if, if Monday doesn't work, that's fine. How many people are we talking about?
Oh, I counted, I, I have to count again, I thought I counted forty, I mean.
Oh, okay, so it's a good number, okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we should be able to clean up a good portion of it so we don't have another long meeting like this one is, uh, for the following week. All right, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reopen? And there's a, uh, what has to be read, the actual motion is, is on our agenda.
Fine, I'll move that we vote to enter into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one A three to, uh, to discuss strategy with regard to anticipated litigation relative to the new DPW facility and anticipated regulatory litigation relative to Tennessee Gas Pipeline two sixty-one upgrade projects and Columbia Gas lateral meter station. And, uh, petition to intervene discussions which in open meeting may be detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and chair, so declares so to reconvene and not to reconvene an open session.
Is there a second?
Richard Foster seconds.
Okay, all right, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, and how do we, um, is LCTV going to?
It's gonna knock everybody else off the call.
Exactly, so those, those that don't, uh, drop off themselves, I will be, um, kicking you out of this meeting.
Okay, thank you for joining us and we'll be back, uh, in one week, uh, for interviews.
Thank you, give me just a minute.